You're all welcome. The meeting will include a public hearing. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kennedy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll be happy to. Pledge allegiance, see the flag?
... by the states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Board Member Kennedy.
Fair enough.
Okay. We're starting a few minutes past the normal time. We had a very long workshop beginning at 2:00. And that's the reason for the delay, so that, you know, staff and board members could use the restrooms and have just a little bite to eat. So we apologize for not being able to start at the usual time. There's a few rules that I'm going to just, that I think most of you recognize and respect, and I'm going to kind of repeat them now. This is, and Vice Chair Messenger will talk about it, this is a business meeting of the School Board of Manatee County, Florida. We are here to transact business for the school district. We ask you to respect that as a business meeting. There will be an opportunity for those who have signed up, you know, to give public comment. I ask you to, you know, respect their comments. And we are asking, you know, the audience not to participate in discussions. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm talking with you, ma'am. If you, if anyone like this lady in the first row, if she wants to discuss something with another person, they need to go outside this auditorium. And if you, anyone after requested to, you know, to, you know, not engage in conversations here, has a problem with it, you'll be asked to leave. So, another thing is, the board members, any board member who has a wish, a compulsion at, on any occasion, and feels the need to discuss something with a member of the audience, I'm asking my fellow board members to make a motion to take a brief recess. And we'll take a brief recess if that compulsion is so overwhelming, it requires that kind of conversation. But normally, that's not something that is allowable during the course of our business meeting. With that being said, we have reconnaations to be made this evening, and I'm asking that Mike Barber come forward and conduct that part of what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders. I know it seems like to maybe some of us that schools started a month or two ago, but actually, it's only been just over two weeks. And our very talented team of We Manatee video producers at Manatee Schools Television produced a video that captured the first day. So, we want to debut that video tonight, so we'd like to show it right now.
Thank you.
Have a great day. First day of the school year, we're out here today waving off our bus drivers and bus assistants. We have 155 different buses rolling this morning.
Thank you.
We're proud of all of our staff, all of our students. It's going to be a wonderful year.
Good morning, Sharks. Happy first day.
We've had a very successful start. One of the things, the good Lord blessed us and didn't rain this morning with the thunder showers that we've been experiencing, which is always problematic. But the first day back with everyone getting used to the traffic flows and the bus times is usually a transition, but so far, it's been. Every classroom I went by, the students are working, teachers are teaching, and we're glad to be back in session.
Happy first day, buddy.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this school year. As you can see, a lot of these people in the community are excited to take their children on their first day of school, so very, very excited about this opportunity.
Have a great day, sweetie. You're all set.
My daughter is in 4th grade. She's extremely happy. She's a safety patrol this year, so she's very excited to be here.
Happy first day for everyone. Have a great day. Good morning.
You can go straight to the front, and they'll tell you where to go. All right, have a good day.
Morning.
I'm really excited about it. I'm also really nervous about it, because like, it's brand new. It's also kind of crazy here today.
So 8th grade is right here, 7th grade is right here.
This is high school, this is my first year, so this should be the best years of my life.
We are the school district of Manatee County.
Join us at wemanatee.net.
It is great to have more than 49,000 students back and focusing on teaching and learning, so we're happy for that. I want to make special mention of Michael Tremboli and Stephen Oposky for, they're the ones who actually produced that video, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the August 27, 2019 Agenda, updated August 26, 2019, and posted to the district website. We are now going to have a public hearing. We're going to close the regular meeting.
We need to, I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. We have a motion by Board Member Hope, and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing nominee will call the question, so call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, it passes 5-0. And I thank you, Mr. Hope, for reminding me of that important piece of legislation. The, now we were going to have a public hearing, so I'm going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the board to hear public comments regarding the 2019-20 Student Progression Plan and answer questions related there, too. Vice Chair? So, we'll be conducting the public hearing. There will be only comments with respect to the student 2019-20 Student Progression Plan. Thank you.
And I don't have anyone, I think, specifically signed up for this item, I don't think.
Chris Patterson signed up. I'm not sure whether she wants to speak now or wait for the public.
I see that there's public comments, but I don't know. So, this is a public hearing, you do not have to sign up to speak on this topic. This is specifically about the Student Progression Plan for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there anyone that is here that would like to speak on this topic? Come on down, Mrs. Mendel. Come on down, Mrs. Mendel, and then Mrs. Patterson.
In regard to Mr. Golden's question about why we're still doing this, we're still doing this because we didn't have a workshop the first time around, and the incorrect plan kept getting posted. There were three different drafts, if I count, that came across our table. And in regard to the intensive waiver, it's something that we've been working on for a very long time, and it was clear that it was not going to be addressed based on the correspondence with Ms. Yost. I'll ask a few things. She did start at page 60 in regard to changes that parents have identified as being an issue. Our questions and our concerns come well before page 60, and it has absolutely nothing to do with a legislative decision by, anywhere by anyone in Tallahassee. We ask that you not remove PE for children who are intensive instruction. We ask that the waiver be non-subjective, and because when you look at the waivers from Sarasota County, Palm Beach County, Broward, and across the state, none are as punitive as what we have here. And I ask that you do not score benchmarks. When the question came up about grading diagnostics, benchmark and interim assessments are diagnostics. They often have material that is not, that has not been taught before, and you are destroying students, especially college-bound students, GPAs. Putting high stakes on a benchmark assessment is ridiculous, and I don't want to hear you trading it out for something else, because not all teachers do that, and it goes right to the grade book. Let's see. And it's, you cannot have a test score for IB, ACE, AP, and Advanced classes. It's absolutely ridiculous. Even the International Association that runs ACE does not require a student to have a passing state test score. So many students are kept, and their curriculum is dumbed down over a ridiculous score. Our children are more than a score. Please, I'm begging you, board, let parents be a part of this committee. Hear from us. We, we have a place at the table, we deserve a seat at the table. And you have to read, in regard to the waiver that Mr. Kennedy wrote, I crafted a good deal of it, and you received it. You received it, and you received all the changes back a couple of weeks ago in regard to all the parents that we, we want done. I don't even know that you're reading your emails, Mr. Reverend Golden.
Okay.
Please, please, do not vote this this evening. It's not even due to the state until October. Meet with parents, hear us out face to face. But this, this, you have to be forcibly remediated, the legislature in Tier 2 or 3, that's not a legislative rule. House Bill 79 took away forcible remediation. It is no longer required. I'm happy to share the statute and the bill with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Patterson. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Mr. Kennedy for taking our suggestions for the waiver, and to the whole board, and to Ms. Saunders for, you know, agreeing to these changes. This will remove the harm that these kids have been going through for years, who should not be in remedial classes, who are placed there only because of a score. So, thank you. I will, this is a big, a big deal for us, and a big win for a lot of kids, like, so. I just wanted to back up, too, because I don't feel like Mr., Ms. Yost was very upfront when you were speaking. The wrong SPP was uploaded from 2017-18, first. Was that back in June or July? It was a, June, okay. It was a, it was completely different changes than what's in even the current document. So, then it, we were told, well, someone was new and uploaded it. Well, those were never even changes that we had ever seen, and then they weren't the same changes here. It was, I had pointed this out, it was uploaded then 30 minutes before the workshop. So, it's an 86-page document, so please explain to me in 30 minutes how everybody was able to look at all those 86 pages and actually workshop it. So we did not have a workshop. We did not have a successful workshop. So this is our first workshop, okay? And then we were given, it started, what, we had 15 minutes, but thank you, we were able to go on to at least have 40 minutes. Bridges said in the past that we've had workshops that are just for the Student Progression And then, when the, and then the next one that was uploaded was not redlined. So that was the night that you're supposed to approve it, but we didn't even know what changes were. They were all like, just black and white. So, that's kind of how we got here. This is why we're here in August. It's not from us being lazy, or us being, not coming upfront. It was because we, I don't know if there's incompetence that's going on, or it's, we're being duped. I, I'm just, but this is how we've, this is the steps that we've gotten here. It's not our fault. Anyways, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate Bridges' comments. We do want to remove that PE for intensive on page 32. We want to remove the test scores part for ACE, IB, AP, on page 52-53, and remove the high stakes from benchmarks, which is a diagnostic, so that is being graded. Ms. Yost, you said that is not being graded, that is being graded. That is page 42. Lastly, the decision tree, I ready is put under multi-sensory and explicit, which it is none of those things. I have also spoken to Jess Ready, I have had conversations, they just approve things. They, they have said, you're not doing things necessarily correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the Student Progression Plan for Okay, then that concludes public comment on this topic.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on the Student Progression, Progression Plan and reconvene the regular meeting. The, the first item of business concerns approval of the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan, and I think we have a handout concerning that. And I think it's Attachment A. And I believe that there's copies of this reformed Attachment A at the front, or at the back. Am I getting an affirmative? Yeah, it's on the table there for, anyone who wishes to have that, and, excuse me.
You need to make sure, ask for the superintendent's.
Markman.
Yes, she needs to give, and you need to have before you can enter discussion.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of this Appendix A that wishes one? There's, there's, at the, the door's leading out, there's, there are some on the table. We run out, we'll get more. Okay. This was a large part of discussion we had in the workshop that concluded about 5:35, you know, this afternoon, and so it reflects his statements we'd made, suggestions from the board principally, Board Member Kennedy, and the, I'm going to, I think that Ms. Yost, you've had a chance to review this? Okay. And, but before we go on, I'm going to ask if the superintendent has a recommendation with respect to the Student Progression Plan, which would include this revised Appendix A.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan for elementary, middle, and high school, and K-12 virtual education.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? I'm going to ask the Board Attorney, can we go further without a, a motion and second of the superintendent's recommendation, or can we have continuation of explanation, you know, first, from our deputy superintendent of?
Mr. Chairman, you can discuss it until you feel like you've discussed it.
Okay, so we can just go on with discussion at this point?
Continue with discussion, yes.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm going to ask if the deputy, I'm going to ask the superintendent if she's had a chance to review this Appendix A, and, and Mr. Kennedy, then, does this reflect your understanding of the amendments that were proposed and discussed earlier?
Yes, sir. It, it does to me. I believe we made the corrections on the edit. As per Ms. Messenger, on the back, it says exercising this option can, so we eliminated some of that verbiage. We put one or two that pertain to all those in that reference. It's got the chart, and then it's got the acknowledgement signatures on the back, so as far as I can tell, it does reflect the comments and edits that were discussed in the workshop.
Okay. This is a little unusual, but I'm going to ask Mr. Kennedy if he's had an opportunity to review this Appendix A, and does this reflect your understanding of the discussion that we had during the workshop?
It does. Can I talk about it for one second?
Okay, well, you'll have more in a second, but the, so, this is kind of where we left off in discussions in the workshop, and there is more to the Student Progression Plan than Appendix A. And our deputy superintendent, would you like to, you know, talk from there?
Whatever pleases the board.
What?
Whatever pleases the board.
Well, I think you're fine right there. But, okay. I think, I could be wrong, but it seemed like your discussions sort of was at page 60, and talking about changes in the, from the current Student Progression Plan.
The reference to page 60 had to do with some of the legislative changes. The summary of changes that is dated 8/27/19 began with page 21. It's a separate document.
Okay, let's.
And beginning on page 21, 21, it began with a change verbiage because of the legislation regarding intensive skill development programs. And as I mentioned, the page 33 and through to, and 60, both address career research courses as well as the CTE graduation policy, pathway. Section F, which is at the very bottom of your chart. Mr. Minor, I'm referring to the, you have a colored copy that is entitled 2019-20 SPP Change Summary. This was originally presented to you by Dr. Organic, and then has been updated as additional changes have been made based upon public comment as well as board comment.
Okay. This doc?
Yes, sir. Page 62, as I began to indicate, the entire chart is going to be replaced with new FLDOE chart on an annual basis. It's usually around October, the state provides that data. So we would then remove our current pages and insert the information provided by the Department of Education to replace it. That is an annual process that comes our way. Page 64 does address the CTE graduation pathway, the added language to include requirements for the new graduation options as defined in new legislation, and that was beginning with the 1920 school year. It's on the second page, it's on the back of your first page, discussing the earning of at least 18 credits, the cumulative grade point average of 2.0 to 4.0, same requirements for ELA, math, science, and social studies, and you can see that in front of you, that they outline all the legislative changes that have been made to the pathway for CTE, and they are now aligned in our Student Progression Plan. Followed by Section G, which is on page 64, addressing the Algebra 1A and 1B that will satisfy the Algebra 1 requirement for graduation. The verbiage has changed, and it indicates that a certified school counselor or the principal's designee must advise students that state universities may require for admission three additional mathematics courses, at least as rigorous as Algebra 1. Followed by another change on that same page, updated verbiage based on new legislation, that a student may substitute a credit in computer science. These are summaries that we did indeed address during the workshop, so we're restating those at this point. Followed by the stu, the opportunity for a student that earns an industry certification in the 3D rapid prototype printing, that they can substitute up to two credits of the mathematics requirement, with the exception of Algebra 1. The next one addresses a student who earns credit in a computer science course, and they may substitute the computer science course, that, that credit for a science credit, except in the area of Biology 1. The next section refers to changes in the general K-12 section. And beginning on page 7, begins with updated language for more, it's a more inclusive language, instead of the bona fide Bible record, an original or certified copy of a religious ceremony certificate accompanied by a parent's affidavit is what's needed. Page 8, a copy of the student's school record, once again clarifying language. Immunizations are reflected in the next box. And this must be documented on, it's no longer the HRS form, it's the DH680, and so that upgrades that information to make certain that parents are submitting proper forms. It's usually Department of Health or your physician that completes these for your families to make certain that you are ready for school. And so the language, it has been updated to reflect property agency references. And then the next area, the principal would determine if enrollment is appropriate, students, parents of students who are not enrolled may appeal the principal's decision to the Executive Director of Secondary Education. We used to call it secondary schools, but it's now secondary education, and so the language has been upgraded there as well. And then the next section, which is Section E, number 2, page 11, focuses on if the principal does not approve enrollment in the regular high school beyond the eighth semesters, the student may enroll in the county adult programs or alternative programs. And it's a semester count that begins the first semester a student enrolls in 9th grade in any public or private school. So once again, clarifying language at that point. Section E, number 8, page 12, addresses exceptional students. For exceptional education, students who have not graduated with a standard diploma, the district will provide services until the end of the school year in which the student turns 22 years of age, providing that the student is 21 years old on the first day of school. We have deleted the guidelines that apply for all other students. This is specific to our exceptional students, our, those students identified with a disability. Section F, page 12, clarifying language as well. Applications to participate in the voluntary school choice controlled open enrollment program shall be available at all school sites and the Office of Student Assignment during the school open choice enrollment. That is a specific period of time. This form shall be completed by the student's enrolling parent or legal guardian and submitted to the designated office prior to the close of the school choice open enrollment period. Students who have been approved through the choice process to attend a school out of their assigned area will be governed by specific rules, following specific guidelines to be placed as part of that enrollment period and the process for identifying school assignments. Section F, number 2, page 12, is another verbiage update regarding a secondary issue. This does not apply to elementary education. The principal may recommend that the student be withdrawn and returned to his or her home zone school for severe academic, secondary academic attendance or disciplinary issues. Section F, number 5, 12, and this defines allowable schools of enrollment. Students can only be in attendance at one school as assigned by the Office of Student Assignment, other than being enrolled in a virtual or homeschool program. So you can combine virtual education with your homeschool assignment, but you cannot be enrolled in two schools simultaneously. Section G, page 13, this is updated language for clarification. Unaccompanied children and youth, and we're scratching out homeless students, they are not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian. in the physical custody of a parent or guardian, are defined as homeless. So, we've clarified the language to define our homeless student population. Homeless unaccompanied students should be referred to Project Heart, which is our homeless education program for enrollment assistance and other services. So, if a parent is unavailable, we want to make certain that our students are enrolled in school if they are homeless. And if they are referred to the Project Heart program, we can walk them through the process and assist as much as possible. We want our... All students in school. Section one, letter A, page... On page fourteen, a portfolio evaluation by the principal or designee include samples of coursework, subject area assessments, and standardized tests to show mastery of the standards for the course. This is updated language for proper writing structures, and this change can be found in other sections as well, where we've just improved the language for sentence structure, et cetera. The next section is language to define requirements. A dependent child of a member of the United States Armed Services on page fifteen, who enters a public school at the twelfth grade level from out of state or from a foreign country, and provides satisfactory proof of attaining a score on an approved alternative assessment that is concordant to the passing score on the required state assessment, has satisfied the assessment required for the standard high school diploma. So, that's covering our students who may be a member of a United States Armed Forces family. We want to make sure that they are accommodated. Section A, letter B, on page sixteen, once again updated verbiage. By grade, the number and percentages of all students in grades three through ten performing at Level One and Two of the required English Language Arts State Assessments. Oops, sorry. Any revisions to the district's... My apologies. The rest of the section does remain the same. I started to read another section, which is on the same page, but it's Section A, letter E. So, that particular portion applies to our students who are in grades three through ten, performing at Level One and Two Required Language Arts Requirements. Section A, letter E, page sixteen, once again, we're discussing revisions for updated language. District's policy on student retention and promotion from the prior year. The Department of Curriculum and Professional Learning. It's a change to the name of the department, and they have the responsibility to ensure this information is printed prior to September first of each year regarding student retention and promotion. And that information is contained within your student progression plan, and that's why it is important for us to move forward and authorize as many components of our plan as possible. Section B, letter A, page sixteen. Students who are deficit in grades K through three in reading, so it includes kindergarten is the change to that particular section, letter A on page sixteen. Revised language for clarity, Section B, page nineteen. Teacher exceptions. Teachers will monitor completion of homework and provide appropriate graded feedback in a timely manner to students. Teachers should collaborate when possible, whenever possible, to ensure that the amount of the homework assigned to any one student is not excessive. Homework assignment should be posted, when available, on individual teacher sites, their websites. Homework grades should reflect the attainment of content knowledge. Homework grades should not be impacted by non-academic criteria such as paper headings, use of specific writing utensils unless accounted for in the grading rubric, which is now changed to expectations. So, that clearly addresses teacher expectations as it relates to homework. Section D, page twenty, addresses our flags. We must... Flagging, sorry, the courses where a student is receiving intensive intervention. An early warning system and elementary reading decision tree, which is Appendix B, will be addressed in further detail in a few minutes, but this addresses the elementary decision tree will be used by problem-solving teams to identify students in need of supplemental and intensive support in the areas of behavior, attendance, and academics. Once again, Section D two, letter F, page twenty-one. It's a repeat of language we had previously on intensive skill development. In-person academic advising for struggling high school students. We mentioned it previously in middle school. Number five, letter B, page twenty-three. Students who are retained must be provided evidence-based, explicit, systematic, and multisensory reading instruction in the area of their deficit, i.e. phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary, et cetera. We need to be very specific as we identify the strategies that will be implemented for our students as we offer instruction. Continuing in the elementary section, K five, pay... Section A, page twenty-six. K two and four, five students will be promoted or good caused each year with their cohort group. Those students who do not meet grade level standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics will be supported in the next grade level through intensive remediation, as well as alternative instructional settings if needed. So, that addresses grades two through four and four, five. Next section addresses good cause. Students in K through two that are placed for good cause if a committee comprised of the student's teachers, counselor, and other appropriate personnel designated by the principal. Review the documents and the recommendation and the reasons for the student's exemption for the promotion criteria. Documentation could be included in a student portfolio. Case conference notes or documentation in the school-wide progress monitoring plan. Students will receive intervention and support in the next grade, but this is a vehicle by which they can be promoted to the next grade level through that portfolio. Good cause four discusses students who demonstrate through, once again, the portfolio in reading, that they are reading on grade level as evidenced by mastery of the state standards in reading equal to at least a Level Two performance on required state assessment. And then, it outlines the specific information that will be included in the portfolio. Information that's selected by the student's teacher as documenting criteria for promotion. But grade three reading required state assessment, documenting that that has been met, the criteria there. They can include multiple choice items and passages that are approximately sixty percent literacy text, literary text, and forty percent informational text, so it's all within the reading component. And then, that they are aligned to state standards. And a parent of a student in grade three who is identified at any time during the year as being at risk of retention may request that the school immediately begin collection of evidence for a portfolio. Many times, our teachers will advocate and begin that process, but parents have the right to do so, and that's what's stated in that section. The next area addresses our students in grades four and fives on page twenty-eight. And once again, it's addressing the good cause in the committee that must be comprised of the teacher, the counselor, and other appropriate personnel as designated by the principal. Basically, the same criteria that you had in the lower grades, indicating that students must receive intervention and support in the next grade if they are promoted for good cause.
Mr. Minor?
Yes, Board Member Kennedy?
Are we going to go through the entire document?
Yes.
No problem. This has been provided for you, and it has been on the web as well, so the board members are aware of that. The next section deals with student social studies, and that is the required study of state and federal governments and civics education to be incorporated into the civics class. And so, the verbiage is there. On page thirty-three, the career research course, and it outlines that middle school students must successfully complete one course in career and education planning, which must result in a complete internet-based, customizable, personalized academic and career plan for the student. Section thirty-three was addressed during our workshop, where this is applicable to middle school, high school, as well as our ESE students, where parents may submit a waiver of the intensive instruction requirements for their child to the student's counselor. And change will also be reflected, as I said, in high school, middle school, middle school, and the ESE. So, that's comprehensive for all of those areas. Required remediation on page thirty-three, Section E, addresses participation in assessment programs. They are mandatory for all students enrolled in a public education. Students must earn a Level Three or higher in the ELA, English Language Arts, and/or math on a standardized assessment within the last two or more consecutive years. And if they do not, they are required to receive instruction through a course that will assist in building the student's skills and in mastering standards. And at the high school, we just reviewed during the workshop, the Appendix A, which would address parent involvement in this process and choices that are made. Grading scale, page thirty-five, NG, no grade assigned. It's basically what the term means. It's placed out there for knowledge of all. Progress reports on page thirty-five. It indicates that additionally, parents may monitor student progress regularly through the Focus Parent Portal. So, that is a resource that's available to service to parents that we hope they will access to stay on top of information regarding their students, their children. Page thirty-seven includes... Included grade calculation for courses when ESE assessment waivers are granted. So, it addresses semester grades in civics for students, and of course, assessment waivers, and their average as follows, and you'll see each quarter, there's a twenty-five percent allocation in each of those areas for exceptional students. The following section addresses changes in the high school sections, beginning with page forty-two, clarification of language that addresses the Florida Course Credit Statute and the enrollment in courses, that each school will follow a district plan to ensure that the grade recalculation is completed insured into the student's system. This is recalculation of a year-long grade, even if the semester grade of F was not earned would result in a higher final grade for the student. The statute may also be applied. On number five, letter C, which is on page fifty-one, there's basically, we're eliminating the comment, more than three credits in practical family arts and consumer science classes. Moving to Section A on page fifty-three. Students shall be exempt from the payment of all fees excluding restocking fees when applicable for AP courses in which they are enrolled, including fees. This section not only applies to AP, but I... International Baccalaureate classes as well as ACE. So, it had... This language has been placed in all of those sections to be consistent for students. Students earning a D or F in an advanced placement course may be withdrawn and scheduled into another course in the same subject area. So, this removes verbiage defining the withdrawal date. This means at any time, and so it originally said at the end of the semester. Section B, page fifty-three. Students shall be exempt from the payment of any fees, once again, and this is applicable to the IB section. And then, Section C, page fifty-three, is the same statement about fees applying to the ACE courses. Moving into Section E, page fifty-four, is addressing clarity with our Avid program. Advancement via individual determination. It's designed to prepare students for college readiness and success. Students who apply for and are accepted must take at least one weighted course honors pre-AP, AP, IB, Cambridge ACE, and/or dual enrollment, and the Avid Academic elective. Avid is designed for students who are capable of completing a college curriculum. The Avid curriculum supports students as they undertake the most rigorous courses with an emphasis on writing as the learning tool, the inquiry method, collaborative grouping, organization, and academic reading. The students must be placed in at least one honors, ACE, AP, dual enrollment, or IB course. Principals are encouraged to make exceptions to this placement criteria in Avid students' areas of strength. This next section is new language as well. Page fifty-six, section, I believe it's section ten. The inter-institutional articulation agreement is jointly developed between the School District of Manatee County and, we're crossing out State College of Florida, and inserting local post-secondary institutions to provide advanced instructions for those students who demonstrate a readiness to engage in post-secondary academic work. This is new as of today. It was called to our attention. It is an excellent recommendation because there are additional universities wanting to partner with Manatee County, and so we're removing State College of Florida and opening that up to post-secondary. Section E, number three, page sixty, once again, is the CTE graduation pathway, eighteen credits, and is identified during the board workshop. Page sixty-four contains the CTE graduation pathway and all of the specifics, which we reviewed earlier. We also reviewed the Algebra I and I B previously that will satisfy Algebra I requirements. I will not review it again. We also spoke of the computer science credit that could be substituted, as long as we are not replacing Algebra I. We referred to the student who earns an industry certification in the three-D rapid prototype printing, mentioned that. They cannot replace Algebra I, but can certainly earn other credits. And the final one addresses a computer science course that may substitute for computer science credit or one science credit, with the exception of Biology. So, I moved through those very swiftly. Move to page sixty-eight. Requirements for students currently holding a certificate of completion who are seeking a standard diploma must meet concordant score requirements based on the statute governing the ninth grade cohort requirements. There have been questions about the concordant scores, and this addresses that, those concerns. They are to be utilized to meet the requirements of state statute. Section A, and that's page sixty-nine, we are basically deleting a section on Excel, the accelerated diploma option. Page seventy-one, the GED testing center where it's located, and that students must apply and pay online to schedule their test at the website. So, that's to assist students in obtaining their GED. Page seventy-nine addresses semester grades for students using an end-of-course waiver. And semester one, it indicates the percentages for semester... Quarter one and quarter two, semester two, same thing. So, we included grade calculations for courses when ESE student waiver is granted. So, that's the section there. We are finally to the final section, I believe, virtual school section, and it addresses updates, basically updated language and statute. We've updated the year under virtual school section. We have changed the school year, so the children who are five years of age or older, but... Excuse me. Children who are five years old on or before September first, two thousand nineteen, are eligible to start kindergarten in August two thousand nineteen. This is changed annually, just to make sure that the plan is updated to meet the current Continuing in that same section, under virtual school, demonstrating success in the previous two years of school, final report cards, how they are addressed, how state and district testing scores for F... It indicates FCAT, FSA, FAIR, AMES Web, I Ready, other assessments from the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. That's the change. And if the student is entering kindergarten, no test scores are required, of course. And then, grades six through twelve, and once again, there's a change in the current year. It is at least one of the following standardized tests in the eighteen nineteen school year. Page eighty-three addresses revised language to define admission process. The apply for admissions in the enrollment window as posted on the Manatee County Virtual Program website, and the website is listed. And the final change... And the final change was on number eight, page eighty-four, enrollment in and completion of six half-credit courses each semester. That language was added to define course completion requirements for continuation in a program at the virtual school. So all of the changes have now been addressed, Mr. Minor. Would you like me to proceed to appendix B, or are there questions in this area first?
I think we've discussed at length the appendix A.
Mr. Chairman, for a motion?
No.
You may like it.
Well, I'm, I'm sure I'd like anything you had to say. I'm, I'm trying to address a question. We had some discussion at length about appendix A. This been revised, and my understanding is that as part of the student progression plan for K through twelve, we have this appendix A, which I believe is met with approval.
Appendix version would be substituted.
Yes, would be revised. Now, you mentioned something about appendix B. I, I do not have in front of me B.
Appendix B is your School District of Manatee County Elementary Chart, which is your decision tree.
Okay. Okay, I guess somehow got lost in my files here, but.
Which is possible. You've had lots of paperwork this evening.
Could be, could be. I, I don't, unless any other member of the board wishes to go through.
I'd like to make a motion.
Through exhibit B. We, I think we're about to have a motion regarding this. Mr. Hope's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Either Board Member or Dr. Hope's is fine. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the 2019-20 K through twelve Student Progression Plan as drafted and amended with the following changes. That typographical and technical errors be corrected. I have read the whole thing, by the way, just now. And on page fifty-four, paragraph G, before college, insert university and, and in section G, paragraph thirteen, make the technical correction to include University of South Florida and USF, along with references to State College of Florida. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second to Board Member, you know, Hope's' motion? Okay, the Chair doesn't hear any at this point. Can we still have discussion? I'm addressing this to Mr. Guy.
Yes.
We, we've heard from the community, okay, Mr. Kennedy, Board Member Kennedy has some comments.
Thank you. Dr. Hope's, the only reason I didn't second your motion is because I have a couple of minor things I'd like to change as well, or at least put up for consideration of the board. But I think those are both, you know, I have no problem with them. I just didn't second the motion because I have a couple more things to add. First of all, Mr. Chair, about appendix A, this is not the Kennedy version. This is the community slash district slash board version, because it's, this is a, kind of a soup of multiple folks input. No, that's okay. No, that's all right. I appreciate you giving me credit for it, but I don't deserve the credit for it because I'm only the person that put it together. So that is correct. All the changes that we discussed at the workshop are included in this version. So there's nothing new. I didn't change anything. I do have two quick items to bring to the board. Number one is on page thirty-two. And this is under physical education. And this, this will be a change that'll be, need to be made kind of throughout where this phrase, but because of appendix A, and we are, and we are moving this intensive waiver from a principal approval to a parent's decision, and then an acknowledgement of the principal. You'll notice on the bottom of page thirty-two, it says that the student can be, that can be waived from PE, and then under two A, it says the student is enrolled or required to enroll in a remedial course. So like, now that we have this waiver, now that we've changed the, the intensive instruction, I just had a problem with required to enroll in.
That would be a technical correction that.
Okay, that, that, that's fine. I just, I just want to be clear. But no, I, I agree. But I, I just want to be clear about that technical change. And then I have one more.
I was just gonna say that that also exists for elementary, that's all.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I mean. Anywhere, anywhere that phrase required to enroll exists. Mr. Chair, the superintendent's got.
Okay, Ken, let's let Mr., you said you had some other.
I have one more, but it's unrelated to this, and I think the superintendent's comment.
Okay.
I just want to, we, we will go back in anything that could be affected by the change of the waiver, we will adjust all those technical, whether it's elementary, middle, and high, to make sure the verbiage matches with that new form. So we, I think that goes back, we'll, we'll clean up all those technical verbages.
Thank you.
Okay. I think the superintendent saying she has no objection to this change that is part of the motion that the Board Member Hope's, you know, has made, and Mr. Kennedy is, you know, pointing out. Okay.
I have one more that is not a technical change.
Okay, now we have a non-technical proposed change by Board Member Kennedy.
All right, this is under page fifty-three and fifty-four. This is under acceleration and enrichment. And I want to take you to the top of page fifty-four. The section acceleration and enrichment begins at the bottom of page fifty-three, but the text I want to direct you to is what begins at the top of page fifty-four. A student must, and this is for an accelerated or AP, IB, ACE course. So the, the current text reads, "A student must have a 3.0 grade point average and have earned Level III or higher on the FSA." Go back, sorry. On your paper copy, it is, on your paper copy, it's at the bottom of fifty-two, right?
Right. Is that what you're talking, right here? A student must?
Yeah. On your paper copy, it's the bottom of page fifty-two. Thank you. "A student must have a 3.0 grade point average and have earned Level III or higher on the FSA, passed a nationally normed standardized test, or earned the required comparative or concordant score within the last two years to be eligible to participate in AP, IB, or Cambridge ACE." Here's what I would like to, and then the next sentence gets into where I'd like to go with it. "A student transferring in from out-of-state homeschool or private school with a state or national norm test score demonstrating that the course is academically appropriate may enroll in AP, IB, or Cambridge ACE." What I'd like to do is make the rules that we are setting for an out-of-state homeschool or private school student entering the district apply to students who are already in the So I think the easiest way to change that would be, "Any student with a state or national norm test score demonstrating that the course is academically appropriate may enroll in AP, IB, or Cambridge ACE."
Okay, I think the superintendent has some comment regarding this suggestion.
I just want us to consider the teachers teaching these courses. So, as we all know, that their evaluation and their teaching to these college-level courses must have a minimal criteria of enrollment. So I certainly agree that whatever you're doing for homeschool or out-of-state should be applicable. So I do think we do need some sort of, some sort of criteria that they're at that college level that is beyond just grades on a report card.
That's, yeah, that's kind of where I'm going.
Because we need to think of the teachers teaching the courses as well.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, now, Mr. Kennedy.
No, it's a good point, and you don't want to, because you're right, teacher pay and test scores, it's all, it's all wrapped up together in high-stakes testing.
Their VAM is right now tied to the performance. So we just need to make sure the students are, are at the level of taking that college-level course. That, that's all. We just need some sort of criteria.
So, so for the out-of, for the out-of-state homeschool and private school kids, it says with a state or national normed test score.
Absolutely. So it could, it could be any applicable state, normed, PERT, anything. It doesn't have to be our FSA at all.
Yeah, and that's.
But I just want to make sure that we've, are just taking that into consideration.
Yeah, no, and I, and, you know, to come back to the middle or for, maybe, I don't know what a GPA, and I just don't trust making a kid's registration in a course contingent on one test on one day, the, the school year before. So that's, that's where I'm going.
Mr. Chairman.
My comment on that, they, let's say they didn't do well on one test, they could take another test, you know, to show that they meet, they're academically appropriate to enroll in.
Yeah, sure. I mean, even what I'm saying, they're, they're gonna have to prove some kind of.
There are multiple ways of showing that they're appropriate, yeah. Board Member Hope's.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it is in there, Mr. Kennedy, because it says a three or higher on the FSA, past, you know, past a national norm test, or earned the required. So I think if they just make a grammatical change here, you know, where it just says, you know, the, the Level III or higher on the FSA, or passed a national, I just, I think A is supposed to be or. It should say, or passed a nationally normed standardized test, or earned the required, and then it would read like your homeschool and out-of-state. You just need to put an or in front of passed on the second to the last sentence on page fifty-two.
And it does say within two years, so it doesn't even have to be that exact year, but.
So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a technical grammatical change. It's a good point. And that leaves the pathway for other evidence of being able to succeed at the rigors of these advanced courses.
Okay. Oh, okay. So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Dr. Hope's, if I understand you correctly, so you're, you're breaking this, so the student can get into this advanced class one of two ways. They either have a 3.0 and a Level III or higher, or they have a nationally norm concordant score. Okay, I'd agree with that.
Within two years.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I, I'd see that being an issue anyway, but.
Okay, good. Good point. Okay.
Do you second my motion?
I will now.
Okay.
Okay. Then we can go on to discussion.
Unless we gotta.
Okay, now we're gonna have a discussion of Mr. Hope's, Board Member Hope's, his motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation with his stated amendments, and I guess Mr. Kennedy's amendments.
Wait, that motion was still alive after all that time?
Yeah, it's still alive. Now we're gonna have discussion.
I'll make it again.
What?
The court says I should make it again.
That, that would kind of tidy it up. I, I have some questions myself that were raised, you know, during public comment, and I'm not sure if they, those are addressed. Or on page thirty-two, thirty-nine, fifty-two. And, and I'm, I'm gonna ask our deputy superintendent if she recalls these concerns that were expressed, you know, in, in public comment about this.
Yes, sir. Page thirty-two was addressed by Mr. Kennedy just a moment ago. It referenced the physical education requirement, where we will change the verbiage for elementary, middle school, and high school, so that has, has been addressed.
Okay.
The next page you mentioned was thirty-nine?
I think thirty-three. I guess that was about the waiver.
Thirty-three.
My, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
My, my issue on page thirty-two, thirty-three, actually, on the PDF document, so it might be a page back for you guys, but it's about that a student can be exempted from PE if they are enrolled in a remedial course. So what I'm saying, that, my problem with that was, is part of that verbiage says required to enroll in remediation. So, and the superintendent's already addressed it.
We'll clean all that out. It will match the waiver form, so that the language going with the waiver.
Okay.
So we can move on.
Chairman Minor, was there an additional page?
There's page thirty-nine, which I think's been addressed.
So we sufficiently addressed your concerns? Mr. Minor? Chairman Minor? I was trying to follow the pages that you were calling out as you.
Yeah, okay, forty-two, I forget, I forget the specifics, but I, these were pages on which members of the audience have indicated, you know, some concern. And you've written them down, and, and page fifty-two, I noticed there were some concerns expressed.
That was, that was we addressed.
Okay, so it sounds like at least most of this, if not all of it, you know, have been addressed. Now, moving forward, I, I think that a repeat of the motion, you know, by Board Member Hope's would be helpful to the board and for the community where we are on this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of the 2019-2020 K through twelve Student Progression Plan as drafted and amended with the following changes. That typographical and technical errors be corrected. On page fifty-four, paragraph G, before college, insert university and, close quotes, in section G, and paragraph G, section thirteen, technical corrections to include University of South Florida and USF, along with the references to State College of Florida. And I do believe that is my motion, and the reference to the technical and typographical errors and changes gives the staff authority to make the changes we have discussed. That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. I think we all understand that includes the amended attachment A.
Yes, sir.
And, okay, there's been a motion, and it made, and it is seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair, Messenger.
I, I was just gonna ask the deputy superintendent to go over a little bit about the appendix B, and, and really address, you know, the concerns over the multisensory reading and what that really means, and, and how that's being addressed in that.
I would be glad to do so, and I will not read to you. This is a seven-page document. There was a comment about redlining. This document has never been included in the Student Progression Plan, so it is brand-new to, to the document. This is a, a document, it's an elementary reading decision tree that has been utilized in Manatee County in years past. It is reviewed and approved by Just Read Florida, and the content has not changed with the version where you see at the bottom, submitted to Just Read Florida on August twenty-sixth, that was yesterday. To, in an attempt to clarify what was core, what was supplemental, and what could be defined as multisensory, there were changes that were made primarily to the right column under instructional materials. Multisensory instruction is multisensory learning that involves the use of visual, auditory, and kinesthetic tactile pathways simultaneously to enhance memory and learning of written language. I know that conversation has been generated regarding I Ready, and is it multisensory? And the answer is, if you are just on the computer, the answer is no. If we are pulling students into small group and making. If we are pulling students into small group and making certain that we are designing lessons for the students to meet their needs, it could become multisensory. So that during, let's say, the 39 to 45 minutes that they're on the computer, you could pull them out for tier two, and/or, just as best practice, to pull them out and provide small group instruction. That is when the multisensory options would become available that are listed in the far-right column of the document itself. It was to provide further clarification, not only for our parents and the community, but for our educators as well. There had been some concerns, were we truly listing wonders as our common core? Our core is the wonders, are the wonders materials. iReady is supplemental, it is not the core. There were misunderstandings when folks looked at this particular decision tree, even though it had been approved by Just Florida, Just Read Florida. So those clarifications, the modifications, were an attempt to clarify throughout the document. And so other changes really have, in the other columns, are non-existent.
I think Vice Chair Messenger has, you know, another question.
I do. So does iReady itself offer lessons for small group instruction?
Those are, it is a part of, if you speak with curriculum associates, their representatives will indicate that it's more than just the computer usage. The design of the small group lessons are primarily at the discretion of a teacher based on the individual needs of the students. There are, what they call a toolkit, that is available, so some resources can be pulled from there, as well as through collaborative planning on part of our teachers.
And then one other thing, when I sat down, I spoke with you about this, one of the things that we talked about was a time limit, and I understand that that's something that will be communicated in a different way, and I understand that, but just to state, you know, as we talked about that, with the increased amount of screen time, our kids are losing social interactions, our kids are losing empathy, which there's research, and that's one of the things, I just want to reiterate that. Like, I support that we have lots of different options, but also to make sure that we're communicating with the schools, what's an appropriate amount of time in each one of these sections, if they're tier two or tier three, because there's a loss, too. And when I spoke to you, it seemed like you really agree and understand those types of things, and so just making sure that that's communicated, so that we're ensuring that we have a lot of other skills that a child needs in order to function, to have a growing brain, and it's not only what's on the computer. It's a lot of other social interactions that only happen when they're not on the computer. Like, when they're doing this small group, or talking about what they, screen time is not terrible. If you talk about what you just engaged in, and you have conversation about it, and that can be a very useful tool. It's just finding ways to make sure that's happening, but...
To summarize the conversation that we had, there is an elementary literacy team that is meeting to take a look at the components of our literacy block, making certain that we provide professional learning as appropriate to our intervention specialists, our curriculum specialists, we're calling CNI right now, any specialist that works with our schools, our administrators, our teachers, so that we all have a common language and a common understanding of our expectations throughout the district. And that is something that we have just begun to work on, and it will continue to be refined until we meet the needs of our students. We do need to address the whole child, and screen time is of concern not only to you, but to many parents and educators. And so we need to find a balance for our students, so that they can grow instructionally, as well as have opportunities to demonstrate their academic performance in other ways.
But I just want to say, I appreciate all the work you've done. I know you came in and were just handed stuff, but I appreciate it, and I appreciate your openness and willingness, you've been very responsive, and I think you've been very informative, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, we've had a motion that's been made and seconded, and, okay, Board? Member Golden, I think, has something to say.
Yes. For the reasons articulated earlier in the workshop, and for the reasons that are being brought out now with respect to this appendix B, which was not a part of the draft, which is a first-time inclusion in the student progressive, progression plan, and in fact, that particular thing has not been addressed at all with any type of parental input, certainly through the 30 days that you were talking about earlier that we haven't, for the reason that at this point in time, we've spent all of this time in this setting, addressing something that I hope will be expanded to at least 60 days, starting in June. I don't think I can in good conscience support voting for this student progression plan. I know that won't stop it from being adopted. I hope it doesn't stop it from being adopted, but I do hope that we can get away from this trial by knife-cut in public in terms of something as important as the student progression plan, that we can expand the time for comment, that we can have more deliberative time, that we can start earlier, maybe in August, in terms of trying to decide whether to adopt this. So I will be voting no.
Okay, are there any other board comments? Chair hearing done, the chair will call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion carries, four to one. The vote was Board Member Hope, Board Member Kennedy, Vice Chair Messenger, Chair Minor in favor, and Board Member Golden opposed. That's it. Thank you very much. This has been very educational for me, and I hope for the public as well. And we can move on in our business here. Okay. Okay. The next item of business is approval of tentative millage rate. Does Superintendent have a recommendation?
Public hearing, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're going to, excuse me. Okay, we're going to close the motion and have a hearing concerning the tentative millage and budget. I'm going to hand over the gavel to our distinguished vice chair regarding this.
This is a public hearing, so you are not required to sign up. This is specifically to the tentative millage rate for the 2019-2020 year. The millage rate is 7.1350, and the tentative budget amount is 768,517,364. So if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak specific to the millage rate and tentative budget, you are more than welcome to. Is there anyone that would like to? Mr. Nelson, come on down.
I'm Norm Nelson.
Hey, Mr. Chair and fellow members.
I'll wait till it's passed out, where you can see it. I had some problem with the front question, whether we're continue or continuous. You all got it?
Yes.
What do you guys, when there's a lie, I guess, when somebody lies about 43,885,364, that's a lie, because it's been many times over the years, over the years. And today, as of right now, it says continue rather than continuous, because now the responsibility is you. You have to vote on the lie. You have to vote to support your people out there who elected you. Now, I'm assuming what I gave you last week was my norms, understanding of new revenue and beginning balances. And on page one, it shows you that new revenues, according to your pages, and it gives you the page numbers, you're only going to have 724 million. You're only going to have 724 million. Not 768. There's no way you're going to have 768. So why tell us that? Why lie about it? Why do you, and it comes very simple, on my graphs and charts, you double-count money. It's not revenue. Money twice. So the monkey is on your back, and what I did to make it simple again, it's really over one number. So if you go to page two, go to page two, which is half of your page and half of mine, where it says you're going to spend 768, if you go to the bottom, look at the blue arrows, it says you can't count the money you do, that you transfer. You don't transfer that revenue. You've counted twice. That's a lie. So when you try to tell us you're going to spend, you're going to have revenues of 768, then you only have 724. That lies on your back. You five are the people that elect you. All this is off pages, I included all the pages that I take the numbers from. In your book, in this, you don't have the money. In all your previous years. When this year is over, and you publish your CAFR, AFR, they'll tell you again, you're lying. You never had the money in the first place. Why do you have to lie in this page, on page two? Why do you have to tell somebody you never have?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the tentative budget and the tentative millage? Ms. Kness, I think is how you said it last time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Saunders, I'm representing a group. I'm representing the students and families at Just for Girls, the staff and the board. And we've been working with the district now, doing alternative education for 26 years. It was identified as a need by the district when you reached out to us to help. Teachers were struggling with students that were failing to thrive in a traditional school setting.
Is this specifically about the budget, because this is only about the budget right now?
We're asking you to include funding for this in your budget. Would you like it under public comment after you approve your budget?
I'm just, this is specifically about the budget.
And I'm hoping that this is an opportunity for you to address the issue of inequity in the funding from the millage that raised wages for teachers. Your teachers needed a resource. We were known and are known for helping girls achieve their full potential. We've had national recognition and awards from the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention in helping to turn around deficits in learning when students come to us two and three years behind.
I understand the value of your program, but this is about the budget. There is a public comment time, you are signed up for that as well.
Will there be an opportunity at that time to amend the budget?
Yeah, so if you'd like to discuss the budget, you can just...
All right, well, I'm qualifying and introducing the organization to be sure that you, as well as everyone else here, so that you know that they understand what you're doing and the consequences it has to the teachers, your priorities, and the budget. May I continue?
As long as it's about the budget.
It's about the budget. It's about a need that the budget will fulfill. We have raised our wages as a consequence of the millage, which I supported and helped promote, to fund our teachers at the same rate as the district. We extended our school day, there was a cost to that. We have a very limited budget at Just for Girls with the base student allocation that the district provides for this resource that we're providing at the request of the district. We expended roughly $75,000 to $80,000 to meet the wages and extend the day. For last year and this year, that would be $150,000 to $160,000. That is something we cannot continue to absorb. It's not sustainable for us. We've talked about this now for 18 months, and it has been said that we were not part of, we were not part of your budget. You can amend your budget at any time. It was also suggested that it was too late. The delays occurred at the result of the school board, not on our part. We were before our contract, and we were before your budgets, and I want to be sure we're before the vote tonight. And I appreciate the grace you're extending to me in this fight that I have on behalf of the students that depend on us, that have been referred by the district and that are district students. These are girls who are at risk of dropping out. There's great cost to the district and the taxpayers if they drop out. The number-one reason for school dropout is teenage pregnancy. The cost of that to taxpayers is close to the amount of your budget in Florida. And what we're doing in these prevention alternative programs is less expensive and more effective than incarceration and dropout. It's a value, and if you vote in favor of it, you'll be helping to reduce the school dropout rate and improve the graduation rate and the opportunity for continued education. I'm asking you to set aside an equivalent amount for all the alternative sites, where among one of 10, for the equivalent of what the millage would have provided had we been specifically included. We weren't specifically excluded, so it's been discussed and recommended by your Citizens Financial Advisory Committee to provide this resource to these alternative programs. If you choose not to do that, and you said publicly you would support it, so I'm not sure why you haven't. Dr. Hope has said that he believes the funding should follow the students, and that he would support it, but not all of the other sites. We are not funded like all the other alternative sites who are serving children who've been adjudicated youth. It's a difference in funding that they get with DJJ that we don't get. Those are considerations in hoping that those of you that said you would support it would put some action behind those words now that you have an opportunity, as this budget is considered and approved. And as you consider the consequence of losing this resource for the students who need us and the teachers of yours within the district who have asked for a resource where they can send these students that will allow them to continue providing these services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate? Okay.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Is there a recommendation of the superintendent concerning the...
Reopen the regular meeting.
Okay, we're, thank you. We're reopening the regular meeting, and I'm asking the superintendent, if she has a recommendation, first with respect to the tentative millage rate?
Yes, I recommend the approval to adopt the 2019-2020 tentative millage rate of 7.135.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. And is there any discussion? Okay, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Just two things. When I said I supported the funding, I do support the funding, but I also said in that same breath that that's a contract negotiation with the district. That is a contract that is negotiated with the district. I have no problem, I will support it if the contract comes forward with the district. And that is what I said that night, and that is what I've said to the superintendent, that it should be negotiated with you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're out of order. You're going to be asked to leave.
The second item is a... The second item is a request. I know that Ms. Jenkins has spoken on this topic multiple times, but just for the community, can you address some of the concerns that were brought forward by Mr. Nelson?
Good evening. Mr. Nelson's concerns are based on the fact that he finds discrepancies between our annual financial report, our CAFR, our tentative, and our final budget. There are discrepancies between the annual financial report and the CAFR because the AFR or annual financial report is completed at June 30th. We bring that to the board on September 10th. Those are unaudited financial statements. Once we have an auditor come in, every few years, we have the Attorney General or Auditor General's office. We also have independent auditors that we hire. When they audit those statements, if they identify items that should be recorded in a different area, we will move the items, journal entry them to record them in the appropriate spot. Therefore, those changes will be present in the CAFR based on the audited statements. They are also presented in a different way. The funds are grouped differently in a comprehensive annual financial report than they are in an annual financial report. In regards to the budget, when you create a budget, you're creating a plan. So we set forth the plan for the entire year. It will not match the annual financial report very often. In some instances, you will have the exact amount of revenue that you have projected. In some instances, you will come very close with your expenses. The annual financial report and the CAFR record actuals. The budget records an anticipated plan. Our tentative budget, when we bring that forth to you, it is with our beginning numbers. Sometimes we don't have a lot of information for our health insurance fund at that point, rates and, and other items. So once we get to our final budget, we have all the pieces put together. So we bring that to the board and we say, this is our plan, a pretty solid plan, where we're going to go with this fiscal year. So that's why we have multiple versions of the budget as well. Do you have?
Okay, Board Member Golden.
The budget is a projection. I'm just, this is a projection of what we will have available to us in the upcoming year.
Yes.
The reports are reports of what took place in the last year.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there an accounting standard that allows you to compare last year's actuals with this year's projected revenues? Is that, does that even mean anything?
The only time that you would look at last year's actuals compared to this year's projections is when you are developing the projections or you're determining a trend. If you wanted to see what your prior expenses had been in order to determine your new projections. There is a section, there are a few schedule, one schedule that lists the budget in the AFR and the CAFR, and that's the one that Mr. Nelson refers to. It is the final budget that's referenced in those documents, not the tentative, because again, the tentative is the first blush.
Is there anything by accounting standards that allows you, that, that does not allow you to take money in one category for capital expenditures? And in your operating budget that you're anticipating expense, that, that operating budget will include transfers of money from your capital budget? Does that, I'm just trying to, so if I'm looking at an operating budget and it includes transfers from a capital budget that allows me now to use that money for operational purposes, is, is there some standard that doesn't allow that to happen?
No, sir.
If I have a capital budget and that capital budget is decreased by the same amount that I put into the operational budget, does that mean that I did not have the capital funds to do that with? Does that, is that prevented?
No, sir. It means you transferred the capital funds from the capital budget to the general fund budget in order to pay those expenditures.
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
When we do that as a budget process, are we lying to the people of Manatee County about the money that we're going to have available for operating purposes for the upcoming year?
No, sir. We're being transparent with you because you were able to see every source that those funds come from, and you're able to see the plan for which we intend to use them.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to follow up on that, that the, what we are approving with the budget includes approving those transfers. And the budget is spending authority. It's authority to transfer the funds out of a capital fund, et cetera. And, and, you know, what I'd like, you know, the public to know is, is of all the audits this district goes through, the one that, that we, we, according to the state auditor general and our, our private auditors, we do a, an excellent job with regards to our accounting of those transfers. And the, the budget is this board giving the superintendent the spending authority as well as showing and giving the authority to transfer these funds in order to, you know, meet both our expenses, but also with regards to the cash flow. And so there's, there's nothing unusual about this. It's, 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 you know, the way government accounting works in this state and in other states. The budget is spending authority, and it's not going to align at the end of the, the fiscal year and the audit, because we have grants that come in during the year. That's why we amend the budget and things like that. And so this is the, the approval of preliminary budget, the authority for the superintendent to, to operate, and we're, we're not, and I don't read that line on them to think that that's revenue. The, the categories are very clear of, of where those, you know, where those funds are coming from. With, with that, the other thing that I would like to ask is, we are going in, you know, the issue that was brought up with Just for Girls is a contract negotiation. And, and, and I, I would like to see upon approval of this budget that we, we, we work towards, you know, finding these funds in the existing budget of about 75,000 dollars. But along with that, I want to, I want Just for Girls to be transparent with us. I want to see the board. We only see the CEO coming up. They've got a governing board. I'd like to see the governing board and know that there's shared governance. I'd like to see a, 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 a plan for fundraising, and I would like to see, you know, academic plans and financial plans. I'm, I'm willing to support an additional 75,000 dollars in this year's contract, but I want it to be a partnership, and I want transparency. I want disclosure. I want to know that the board is overseeing the finances, and I want to see them here too. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I will support this.
Are we? Okay, we're talking about.
The millage.
Oh, that's what I thought. Yeah, I can understand. Okay. Is there any other comments regarding the budget?
The budget or the millage?
The millage.
Excuse me, the millage. Thank you for correcting me, the millage. Okay.
It's a budget.
Okay, okay. Well, we're talking about the millage first of all. The millage rate's been moved and seconded. Okay. Chair, hearing no further comments from the board regarding adoption of the, of the tentative millage rate, the, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of approving the motion, approving the superintendent's recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying nay. The motion is approved unanimously, five zero. Yes, Board Member Kennedy.
I just want to, this was my mistake. I thought these were two separate public, one for the millage and one for the budget. That's why I didn't say anything.
Yeah, we are. They are separate. We haven't yet.
They're on the, they're on here as two.
Well, there's one and two.
Together.
Okay.
Forget I said that. I'll take care of it in a second.
You're allowed to take that back. Okay. The next item of business. Well, we wandered a little bit. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of adoption of the tentative budget, okay? And does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval to adopt the 2019-2020 tentative budget in the amount of 768,000.
No, no.
Million, sorry. Million, 518,364 dollars.
No, I think you.
What? Yes, sir.
I think you left out the millions there.
768 million, 517,364.
That sounds.
Dollars.
Okay, thank you, in American, U.S. dollars. Okay, there is a, a recommendation from our superintendent to approve a tentative budget in the stated amount, and is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
I don't know yet. I have a question.
I'm asking, I'm asking the board if there is any. Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Is there discussion? Discussion time. Board, Board Member Golden.
Madam Superintendent, does your recommendation for the budget include a consideration of the request that was made by Just for Girls?
Her contract has already been approved, sir, so it is not in this amount.
So that does not include the request that she made?
You are correct.
You have to refresh my memory because I'm forgetting. Did we not, not include or not approve this specific request in the last year's budget because, well, of a multiplicity of rationales? But the thing that I remember most was that we were going to give consideration to this in this year's budget. Now, I'm not, I thought that was something that we said that we would consider because there was no way we could go back and give money to this organization for last year.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Gold. Is there any other comments? Board Member Kennedy, or Board Member Kennedy.
Reverend Golden, if my memory is correct, when we last addressed this in the spring, we attempted to approve a budget item to provide funding for all of the contracted schools, which failed. And so now we're back again. So I'm, I support approval of this tentative budget, but I do want to echo the words of Dr. Hopes, because I think we all would like to see those kids, those young ladies served, and the results are there and the track record is there. But I think when some of the conditions that Dr. Hopes has rightfully suggested, then the board can take another look at this and say, we would like to amend the budget to allocate funds from certain, certain fund to go to Just for Girls. And as long as we're on the topic, this will come back up again. I just want to say that I know what we always came back to the last time we took a bite at this apple was that if we provide this for Just for Girls, we have to provide it for all the contracted schools. I'm going to suggest again, as I did back then, that all I'm concerned about is Just for Girls, not all the other contracted schools. So at this moment in time, I agree with Dr. Hopes in his suggestion and direction, or suggestions, excuse me, for, for Just for Girls. And if that time comes, I will support it.
Okay. I would just like to have Mr. Hopes articulate the specifics with respect to this request from Just for Girls, that he would like to see answered. That's all. It was a joint conversation.
I'm sorry. The item of business right now is the adoption of the tentative budget. Now, it's been moved and seconded for adoption of this. I think the superintendent has, you know, further, further comments regarding this tentative budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We do have a required timeline to pass the tentative budget. The Just for Girls contract came before the board, and it passed as it was without the millage part brought up or in it. It does not mean that the board, after the requirements are met, cannot ask to have their contract amended, and then we will make an amended budget at that time. But due to requirements and those conditions aren't met, I would suggest that we follow suit, and then we can come back and address the conditions of the budget and the contract if the board finds it acceptable.
You're talking, okay. Okay. Is there any further comments regarding the budget of the school district of Manatee County? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of adopting the, the motion approving the superintendent's recommendation concerning the school, the budget of the school district of Manatee County, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying nay. This budget has been approved unanimously, five zero. Now, the next item of business on the agenda is a public comment. I'm going to turn the gavel over to our distinguished Vice Chair Gina Messenger for public comment.
Okay, I'm just going to read our typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, Mr. Nelson? Come on down. And after Mr. Nelson, Ms. Phillips.
I don't have a handout this time. Norm Nelson? I have here in front of me a personal email. It's from Cynthia Saunders. Dated 22nd. And in it, she asked me to do certain things. But one of the things she talks about is your budget. There it is. 841 million point six projected district budget for 2019-2020. It's entirely new number. Your CFO, once she got up here and rebutted. Your CFO, once she got up here and rebutted me, she didn't mention that she counts money twice, you accept that, so now when I give you the red copy, it said it, continue, I'm going to add the S now, it continues, so if you're hearing me for the rest of the time, you're trying to spend me, your CFR and AFR tell you how much money you started with, and how much money you've actually got, actually got. It matches seven hundred and twenty-four, close to that, you're lying, now it's on your back, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, and after Ms. Phillips, Ms. Caness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On Monday, August twenty-sixth, I received a termination letter, and the termination letter was dated August twenty-third. I don't understand how I was able to come back on campus if I received the termination of employment letter dated October twenty-third. On eight-six, well, seven-twenty-three, we had a meeting here, and I informed everyone that I already blew the whistle, okay? On eight-six, I filed an EEOC complaint for not having adequate access to focus, as all other registrars in this district, whether charter or district. On eight-fifteen, I received a request for student names and ID numbers from School Board Member Golden through Willie Clark for the students that did not attend or come to Lincoln Memorial Academy. I asked, was a school board member allowed to do that, and Willie Clark said, oh, just give it to me. After doing that, I sent an email to Cynthia Saunders indicating that School Board Member Request, School Board Member Golden requested student records, and I, to this day, I don't have a response back. On eight-fifteen-nineteen, I filed a retaliation complaint with EEOC after I was asked to send the student names and student ID numbers to School Board Member Golden, by the way of Willie Clark. On eight-seventeen-nineteen, I filed a whistleblower complaint, and on, like I said, on eight-twenty-six, I received a letter of termination, and it was dated eight-twenty-three. When I received that letter, I asked Mr. King three to four times, was it in retaliation of me being the whistleblower? And Mr. Clark finally answered, Mr. King was not obliged, thank you.
Ms. Caness, and after Ms. Caness, Mr. Wooton.
Thank you, I just briefly want to thank everyone, the staff, the district staff who were waiting for your authorization, thank you, Dr. Hope's for leading, and Reverend Golden, and, and Mr. Kennedy, and Ms. Messenger, and thank you again for your patience as we've been trying to advocate for these students, that all of us hope for the very best and want to do our best for all of them, thank you again.
Mr. Wooton, and after Mr. Wooton, Mrs. Patterson, which I think she might have left.
All right, we're here again to start a new middle school athletic year, and I'm the athletic director at Lee Middle School, we just made our schedule up with Mr. Montgomery, added Mona Jane to the schedule, more work, more time, and you know me, I'll do it, but every year, we, I have that thought in my head, in the summer, should I continue doing this? Athletic directors here, at the middle school level, we make a thousand dollars supplement every year, that's about forty-two, forty-three dollars a check, but middle school is the most important grade, at least I think, in this, in schools, because that's the most change out of a kid, puberty, everything. I ponder that decision every summer, should I resign, should I not do it, but every year I'm back, so, but, and then every year, the supplement doesn't change, it stays the same, and I just wonder sometimes if anyone's listening, listening to us, but when I come into the school every year, I see those little sixth grade kids that I put up, let's sign up for basketball, and two hundred of them sign up. And then I, I get suckered into it again, I do it again, and I give high fives in the hallway, and, and then the rest is history, and we have another year, so, I encourage you all to get a little bit more involved on the middle school level, come out to the championship games, I'll, I'll email you, I'll invite you. Lee Middle School, we played SUG, and it's basketball championship last year, at SUG Middle, standing room only, standing room only, I barely got out of there, we lost, but it was a great game for, you know, those little neighborhood schools to finally have a little, little say, you know, a little power there, the whole student body was there, but then I come back to summertime, and I'm like, oh, should I do this again, for forty-two dollars a check? We've earned it, I sit in the room with those other middle school ADs to at least take a look at it, we do it for the love, not for the money, we really do, and we just, we're doing it, we keep, we're, we're going to keep doing it, but someone has to say something, you know, we're not asking for the bank, but we're asking for something, some extra there, and I'll keep doing it, I'll keep giving high fives until someone listens, but I'll be inviting you to our championship games this year, we start cross country, then we go into soccer, basketball, and then flag football, so you'll be getting our schedules, and I hope to see you at meets that we have, the middle school's kids, a thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Patterson, I think she left.
Madam Vice Chair.
I'd like, I'd just like to ask a question, what he came up and just talked about, was that something that we dealt with in the budget already? It sounded like he was asking for more money.
Negotiated item, I've sent Ms. Joost an email to work with Ms. Barber and reevaluate it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Mrs. Patterson left, Mr. Jones, and after Mr. Jones is Mrs. Mendel.
Greetings, Board and Staff Members, I'm, I'm here once again, actually tired of coming here, kind of saying the same thing, appealing, appealing to your reasoning and your logic and intelligence, I'm asking you once again, there's been some recommendations for terminations, we have had a very different experience in that video that we witnessed, that was not indicative of everything that happened in the district, that was a feel-good story, but that was not the true story, your September twenty-third decision destroyed a learning environment over at Lincoln Middle, you can't deny it, the kids are now complaining of substandard educational experience, I was out there the other day to meet a parent that asked me to come to help her with a DCF complaint, when she brought a DCF complaint, officer out to the school to talk to a student that had been threatened by a teacher threatening to be kicked, and you can go home and tell your mother, I saw kids, First Amendment, civil rights be denied, their, their, their civil rights be denied, First Amendment, freedom of speech be, be denied, we saw a freedom of speech bridge right here in these chambers, right here in these chambers, it feels like a lunch counter in here, like a den of thieves to me, so when I hear Dr. Hope's talk about integrity and transparency, that's just lip service served because we haven't seen it, I continue to go back and say the same thing that I've been saying for several years, excuse me, there's a competency issue here in the district, the people that we continue to advocate for through crooked process and and poor due process, it's, it's bearing its face now, you don't understand it, you don't want to see it, it, it's bearing its face now in, in the behavior and the decisions that we're making because the people are not competent, your HR department, that you just got rid of Dr. Brown, and what do you do, make a even more moronic decision by putting Wendy Magellan there when she had, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, when we replaced someone with, I appreciate that, Charlie, and I apologize, but when we replace someone that we just got rid of with someone that has even less experience, haven't advertised for, we didn't advertise for a superintendent, and now we're running around wondering, like, why are things falling apart, it's competency, I keep telling you, but I, I don't get it, so I, I do understand it because we create this cocoon of incompetence so we can manipulate people and do the things that we want to do, you know, but that takeover Lincoln, man, that was, that was a, that was a poor decision, it, it has damaged the reputation of, of the district, it has damaged those children over there, Reverend Golden, you've been a long-term, a board member of Manatee County, and also, I think, believe now, still center stone, why wasn't, why wasn't the mental health team sent out to assess, you know, the trauma that may have been caused by, that, all that law enforcement intervention on those kids, kids were crying in classroom, you heard a teacher say every time they came by, she was afraid to have her phone in her hand, y'all need to do better.
Thank you. Mrs. Mendel, come on down.
Okay, just a quick response to acceleration and enrichment, you said a student must have a three-point-oh and a level three or higher on the FSA, or passed a nationally norm standardized test, question, opt-out kids have no scores, rising eighth graders have no score, and the ninth graders have no score, so how do you expect parents to, are we supposed to pay for our children to have a nationally norm test in eighth grade so that they can then enroll in an AB, AP, IB, or ACE program? You cannot tie a score unless you are going to, what, what do our children of color do? Not every child of color has a three-point-oh, or any child for that matter, how, parents are going to come up and pay for these standardized tests, this is ridiculous, this has never been this way for two years in a row, we always took out, we, we made it and or or, whatever we did, so you really need to think about that, because basically, my kids would never be able to take an AP, IB, or ACE class in high school, and it's so, and you can't ask an eighth grader to take an SAT or an ACT, it's, it's not even feasible or developmentally appropriate. The question is, you're tied, you, you did this because there's a VAM score to work with, well, we do have to think about that you don't even need to use VAM anymore, the measure is no longer needed in, as of House Bill, passage of House Bill seventy-sixty-nine, in July of 2017, Citrus did away with their VAM score and came up with their own measure, I'm tired of us continuing to use VAM when we don't need to, and tie us all to a test score. Also, did you know that on June twenty-seventh of 2017, you, this board voted to change the Board Policy Manual, code twenty-one-twenty-five, you have now stated that the school advisory council at every school will be limited to ten voting members, you passed that, and now we have principals who are telling the SAC members that it's a state mandate, and this happened two years ago, and we are not following the rules, and there's no negotiation, and some schools actually voted, and they told this district, told, gave the exact language as to how the bylaws were to be changed, I'm sorry, but based on, on statute one-zero-zero-one point four-five-two, a SAC is defined in the statute as the, it, it must have an equal representation of ethnic, racial, and economic communities served by the school, it says, the only thing that says is that the school district must review the district, the, the membership composition of each advisory council, it does not tell us we can restrict the number of parents that we can have voting on our SACs, and so, basically, I, I'm SAC Chair at Lakewood Ranch High School, I will not bring this vote to the floor, I will not vote to, to, to have my committee only have ten, ten members, and furthermore, if it were state statute, well, you wouldn't have to put this in the bylaws, it would already be law, so what's in it for the district?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
I'm sorry, I have Larry Newman down as well.
Oh, he's not on my computer. And Mr. Newman, come on down.
Members of the Board Superintendent, I'm here to address you again about the need for this board to implement the Holocaust education law of this state, perhaps you are aware that a headline from yesterday's Green and Herald read, "Are Manatee Schools Teaching the Origins of the Holocaust as Required by Law?", and the very troubling answer from one can glean from this article is, for the most part, the answer is no, I want to take a few quotes right here on the front page, a quote from the Chair of the State's Task Force on Holocaust Education, "You're not going to teach kindergarteners or first graders about concentration camps, but you are going to teach them not to smack the kid next to them because the other kid wears glasses." Another quote, this time, excuse me, by the Director of Secondary Curriculum for Manatee County, schools says that at the elementary school level, the schools address, quote, overarching goals of Holocaust education with an emphasis on prejudice, racism, and stereotyping in the later grades. Well, the law does not mandate teaching manners or teaching character education, those are some of the results of teaching about the Holocaust, but that's not the mandate for teaching the Holocaust, but the writer at the very beginning of the article gets closer to the mark, "The Holocaust is more than a history lesson, the slaughter of six million Jews was a lesson in the dangers of prejudice and the need for civic engagement, it offers a horrifying study on the effects of dehumanizing others, and it highlighted the power of choice, the choice to cry out or remain silent." Those are things students need to learn within the context of teaching them about the Holocaust, if we reduce it to character education and teaching manners that leave the Holocaust out of it, that's not what the mandate is, mandate is teach what happened, do the students even know what Holocaust means? And there are many ways of teaching it very effectively without even going into concentration camps, because of course, you do want to approach the, the subject delicately on younger years, but you could teach how, for example, the Nazi Party became the majority party in Germany through legal elections by the early nineteen thirties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All you, Mr. Minor.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chair Messenger, for handling the public comments. Okay. Next item of business is approval of minutes, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of the board workshop, the minutes of the board workshop on August thirteen, twenty nineteen?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from August thirteen, twenty nineteen workshop and regular meeting and public hearings.
Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, will call the question, all those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation of our approval of the minutes for the board workshop and the regular meeting and public hearings of August thirteen, twenty nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay, all those in, excuse, the chair hearing no nays, it passes unanimously, five zero. The next item of business is consent items, is there a recommendation of the superintendent concerning consent items?
Yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen.
Double.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's and seconded by Board Member Kennedy to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the consent items, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay, the motion is approved, five zero. The next item is new business, and the item concerns approval to name the parish community high school agricultural building, and I think we have, you know, some folks here who would like to speak to this matter, and have they signed up?
Yeah, I have three that have signed up.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I have Britt Guyer and then after Britt Guyer is Larry Parish and then Brenda Rogers. Those are the three that I have. So Britt can come on up. You have three minutes.
Good evening and, uh, thank you for allowing us to come to you and speak to you about this opportunity. Uh, my name's Britt Guyer and I'm Ollie Norris, one of the proposed candidates to, uh, be named for the, um, well, we thought it was the agriculture building, but I think it's been changed to maybe a classroom and another building on site. But, um, what we'd like to propose and for the board to adopt is to recognize both men, recognize both men equally and, um, and I think that would be a great thing for the community. Um, Ollie Norris, uh, he was a farmer and, um, contributed greatly to the particular agriculture business. Mr. Seall Wright was an educator and contributed to the education system and we think it would be an excellent opportunity to recognize both of them in that manner. Uh, we had the opportunity to talk to Dottie, um, Seall Wright about this and she said, well, you know, it's not really my decision to make to be able to do that, but I'd have to put myself in Travis's shoes, Travis Seall Wright. And he, and she said that I think that Travis would want both men to be recognized. And I asked my wife, Skylar, about that too. What do you think your father would want? And he, she said, I think both men would want, I, I think he would say that I would want both men to be recognized with that. And so what we're proposing is that, um, the board taking consideration to recognize both men on either the classroom or the other building that is on site. And, um, it can make a win-win for everybody. It'd be a win for the community. It'd be a win for the Seall Wright family. It'd be a win for the Norris family. Most of all, it'd be a win for the board. That way we're coming together as a family, as a community and as a board to recognize and honor both men. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further comments?
Mr. Parish and then Ms. Rogers.
Well, hello there. My name's Larry Parish and, uh, I looked around and I think I'm probably the only person in the room that knew both these guys. I'm not completely sure, but I think I am. I knew, I've told you before, I knew Oliver since, uh, the early sixties, about sixty or sixty-one, up until his death in two thousand. And I knew Travis from ninety-five when I retired and came back down to start operating the Grove Care business. And, uh, and from where my barn is in Parish, I can look about two hundred yards away is Travis's house. So he's been a friend of mine and in the mornings when he was going to work, I'd wave to him in the mornings and wave to him in the afternoons when he's coming in a lot of times. So we talked, you know? Both these guys were really good friends. The difference of them is not much of a difference. One of them was a farmer who pushed education. The other was an educator who pushed farming. My thoughts on it is, and I, I've given it a lot of thought. And what, I'm, I'm, when I was in the old guard, I've told you that before and before I got sent to, I was an infantry soldier in the army. I was in the old guard in Washington DC and we buried a lot of people in Arlington about five or six or seven a day out of my unit. And so we had a little saying up there that's no man is really forgotten or no man is really dead until he's forgotten. And when I started this thing out with Oliver, that was my intention was trying to keep him from being forgotten. Because right now you'll see people that will say, I don't know who in the world Oliver Norris was. That's because he died in two thousand. And I think Travis died around twenty sixteen. I know that when, when I went to Oliver's funeral at the Methodist church, I got there about twenty minutes late and I was standing outside. There was that many people knew him in two thousand. Now I was hard pressed to find anybody because people forget you when you're gone. A buddy of mine told me one time, says stick your hand in a bucket of water and pull it out and hold it slow, it's left there, it's hardly long to miss you when you're gone. And that's the way this is. And that was my goal and I see nothing in the world wrong with having both of those good men on the same side doing the same thing because they were friends. I know that to be a fact. And if either one of them was here, that one would be pushing the other one. And I appreciate getting the opportunity to talk to you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Superintendent Saunders, System Administrators, I have a prepared statement that, um, I want to share and, and then we'll go from there. My name's Brenda Rogers and I've had the privilege of working for agriculture all of my thirty-five year career here in Manatee County. I'm the daughter of a Manatee County farmer, first dairy, then citrus and cattle. My parents demonstrated service in every aspect of their lives, teaching me and my sisters to give back to the community that we've been so blessed to be part of. I'm sharing this because most of you in this room don't know me or anything about my life's work, but what I want you to realize is that I have knowledge and experience that comes from years of affiliation with agriculture, with public service, with both formal and informal educational systems. Tonight you're going to make a decision regarding the naming of the Agriculture Education Center at Parish Community High School. You have the names of two honorable men before you and I've been asked to speak on behalf of the nomination of Travis Seall Wright that was made by the Parish Civic Association. Mr. Seall Wright was a teacher in the Manatee County school system. He was also a farmer. Citrus was his commodity. Most of the agri-science teachers in our school system learned from him. Most who served and retired in the last twenty to twenty-five years consulted with him. He literally trained hundreds of Manatee County students each year of his career and many in the years preceding just before his death. He was one of the original STEM educators, teaching animal science, animal nutrition, soil sciences, plant sciences, environmental protections through best management practices and the land and water conservation. He was recognized numerous times by his peers, both his professional colleagues when he received a distinguished service award and by the Manatee Ag community as agriculturalist of the year and his induction into the Manatee County Agriculture Hall of Fame. He was nominated because of his broad reach, his expertise, his willingness to share it, the lives he touched, the youth he developed and the careers molded through the training and education present, presented. I respectfully ask you to keep these thoughts in mind. Um, we were not told about the, um, recommendation that was going to come before us and so we leave that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chairman, uh, Messenger. Okay, um, is there any motion concerning this? I, I have a, a question.
I don't have a motion because I don't know what to ask.
Okay, um, I'm asking a legal. Is there any legal impediment, uh, to naming a building, you know, for two people? I'm asking this to our board council.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think you're allowed to honor however you want to honor a person. The, uh, former Johnson Elementary School is named after two people.
Okay. Now, um, there, there was some mention that this building, uh, this honor was, um, sort of transferred, transformed into a classroom as opposed to a building. I think we're talking about, you know, a building there at, uh, Community, Parish Community High School. Is that correct? Okay, and, uh, the, you know, people from the community have, you know, suggested that we, um, name it after both of these, you know, fine citizens and, um, I don't know which would go first, but, uh, you know, I guess the suggestion is, uh, you know, naming, naming it, if it went alphabetical order, it would be the, uh, Norris Guyer and Travis Seall Wright, uh, you know, agricultural building. Yes, Mr. Hopez?
I, I have a suggestion. I know we've, we've heard both of these names, but, um, you know, one suggestion would be to name the agriculture department. Uh, and then the other, there is a physical barn and, and agricultural fields. And so perhaps one way to be inclusive would be the Travis Seall Wright Agriculture Department at Parish Community High School. And then we could name the, the outside ag building and, you know, the, uh, the, the fields. So it'd be the, you know, Travis Seall Wright Agriculture Department and it would be named the Ollie Norris, you know, Agricultural Building or whatever they're calling the, the, the outside building. Uh, but perhaps since Travis Seall Wright was an educator, uh, to name the department after him, just like you would name a, a college or a school and, and name it the Travis. So that would be my suggestion, Travis Seall Wright Agriculture Department at Parish Community High School. And then we could go about naming the, the outside building, you know, it would be the agriculture department, the name would be up there and it would be the, whatever they call the barn, uh, the barn, you know, the, the Ollie Norris, uh, you know, uh, agricultural barn at Parish Community High School.
Okay, thank you, uh, Board Member Hopez. Uh, I got a question for your legal counsel. Do we have provisions in our policies for, uh, naming departments?
Mr. Chairman, your, your, your policy allows you to name a facility or a portion of a facility to commemorate an individual. I do want to caution the board however, because it says that when you're naming a portion of a school that is recently opened, it has to be in operation for a year before the facility can be named.
Okay, so, but whatever name or names, uh, this board and the individuals on this board may favor, um, could not really be affected until, did you, did you say a year after the, uh, school was open?
Has to be in operation for a year.
Okay, we're a little short of that it sounds like, but, okay, uh, let's go to Vice Chair Messenger, I think has something that she would like to share with us.
We decided, if you recall, when we approved that policy, that this would be grandfathered in because they requested it before we changed the policy. So that would not go into effect. It would go into effect for any other name after this, but these two names were proposed prior to the policy change.
Fairness to Mr. Guy, his brother was sitting in for him, that means.
Well, you should be watching us.
If he acts like he doesn't know what we're talking about, that's because the, the other guy was here.
Section six four six. Watch us.
I have words with him in the morning, I assure you.
However, um, if you recall, Mr. Barber emailed us several different items that are, are facilities, um, since it sounds like a department may not be an option. Um, there's the ag classroom exterior, which was a picture that was sent to us showing us what that would look like. Um, there's the ag classroom and then there's the barn. Those are the two, the three things and of course the fields. Those are the things that are really associated with the ag department. So if you want to pick one for one and one for the other, I think that that's a wise idea. I would like to point out that when we asked for names for the high school, one hundred fifty-four people picked Seall Wright. And then another six picked Travis Seall Wright. So I just want to point that out, um, as a consideration that this was, that was, out of everything that came from the community, that was a resounding, that is the name they wanted on the entire high school. So I think that it's really important that that name be visible wherever we would determine is the most visible place, um, whether that's the outside of the agricultural classroom, whether that is the barn, I really don't know. But to me, it seems like those two options would be the best option, um, for that name. Um, or maybe perhaps agriculture classroom because he was a teacher. But to me, I could see a more benefit to finding names for both of the facilities, using both names in separate facilities, I should say, rather than trying to combine them into one because then I think one person might get lost in that when we actually have more than one option here.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Okay, let's go to Deputy Superintendent Wagner.
Very good. And I just want to give you some history about, we had the same type of conversation when we built MTC East Campus and this is going back, you know, almost twenty years. Uh, so we had the, the Dr. Conard Building, we had the Sheriff Wells Building, uh, then we had the fire department, uh, fire facilities and we had Chief Mark Saunders and we have a burn pad for him and we have Chief Johnson for the burn tower as well. So we did split that up. When we hear about, people talk about there was a facility and it's changed into a classroom, I think maybe what you're talking about is we do have a barn out there and it is a teaching barn. And so we do have risers inside of the barn and there is a, so it's not just a barn where you still have livestock, it actually is classrooms being conducted in there. Uh, when you talk about the fields, I mean, really a more common term we use is a land lab and the land lab could be all encompassing of the barn, uh, which really is a teaching type environment, uh, and the field. And then if we do the shade house or the greenhouse or whatever other facilities we put in there would still be part of the land lab, uh, be known as the land lab. So you could call one so-and-so program at Parish Community, uh, High School and you could have one that's called, uh, so-and-so at the, the land lab. So you, you have two prominent areas to name individuals as opposed to just calling something, somebody's, you know, a, a name and then a barn.
Okay, uh, Board, Board Member Hopez?
I think, you know, I, I think if we ask general counsel if there's a way to do it, because I think we can treat all of the facilities related to the agriculture department as part of that department. And that is a way to, as Vice Chair Messenger said, you know, Travis Seall Wright, I mean, that was like, that was like the, the most prominent name that came up for naming the entire school. And so if we then treat all of the individual brick and mortar of the agriculture department as a, you know, as the concomitant facilities, then that name could be prominent throughout the agriculture department and we can then name the greenhouse within the Travis Seall Wright Agricultural Department. You know, individually recognize those components of it. I do believe it's appropriate recognition for, for someone of, 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 of his commitment to education. And then we could go about each, the greenhouse could have somebody else's name on it and the, the barn could have somebody else's name on it. But the prominent would be the, the, all the facilities that make up the department would have, you know, Travis Seall Wright's name and then we can, the classroom could have someone else's name, but, but, I mean, I can see them even having their own department, you know, header, you know, the Travis Seall Wright, you know, Agriculture Department at Parish Community High School and it would be prominent. And then other individuals that contributed to agriculture in Manatee County can, can have their name on a, a greenhouse, a barn, a field, you know, whatever. And that's, that's how I was sort of looking at it.
Okay, um, okay, Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you. Um, I had an idea coming in here tonight that I'm going to share. Larry talked me out of it, but I'm going to come back to it. Uh, my suggestion was going to be that we as a board kick this back to the schools, to the school advisory committee to have that school advisory committee give us a recommendation. Like, that idea has kind of developed during this conversation, during public comment because from what I'm hearing from, from Deputy Super Wagner is that we've got a multi-piece program, uh, ag program there. So there's multiple opportunities, um, to name. So when that entire ag facility is built out, it sounds like there's, you know, like I said, there's, there's plenty of space for naming. But I, I don't know, I just feel like, uh, this may need a little more consideration from either the SAC. from either the SAC or from the board. I, I just want to put it out there uh, as an idea, because this does not feel like a fully formed, uh, idea to vote on, to me, but I'm just one person, so.
Mr. Co- Okay, uh, Vice Chair Messenger.
It was my understanding from the lawyer that we cannot name a department. But could we name the building, which, what has been presented to us is there's the classroom exterior where the building is, could we then name the building, which I believe should be named Seawright, could we name the building Seawright, and then the barn, which is another facility after Ollie Norris, because Ollie Norris did more of the farming, so that would be the barn and the fields. And Travis did the, the teaching, and, and so that would be more appropriate on the classroom, and on the building, I should say.
Mr. Chair, um, Mrs. Messenger, the, the rule allows you to name a portion of a school, the, and it's, it calls it a facility, and the examples it gives are all bricks and mortar type facilities, rooms and buildings and that kind of thing. The, the notion about naming a department after somebody, whether that's a good notion or not, it doesn't seem to be contemplated by the rule.
Is it prohibited?
I, I, I think that's what you're saying.
Right, I just wanted to understand if that was even legally permissible. I'm not sure I would necessarily be in favor, but I like the idea of it. I just don't know if that's really could work in this, in this high school setting. That's my only, uh, uh, that I'm unsure about.
Okay. Mr. Di, if, if I understand your remarks is you're confirming Vice President, Vice Chair Messenger's understanding that we can't name a department, we can name buildings.
That, that's correct. It's, the, the rule talks about naming bricks and mortar type facilities after somebody.
Okay, thank you.
And when Dr. Hope said, is it prohibited? The general rule is that if a statute or a rule or something gives you examples of how it's to be applied, that those, that list of examples points you in the direction the rule is supposed to take you. And when it's saying bricks and mortar, such as buildings and classrooms, that kind of thing, I'm, I'm interpreting the rule saying, it wants you to name it after something tangible.
Okay, okay, uh, Board Member Golden.
Uh, I'd like to ask Vice Mess- uh, Vice Chair Messenger, if she would repeat what she said about the two buildings. You said one.
Sure. Based on the photographs that we received from Mr. Barber, we received four photographs, um, a while back, um, the twenty-first. So about a week ago. There were four pictures. One is the aerial view of the school. One is the agricultural classroom, inside the classroom. And if you've gone to other schools, you can see that sometimes a specific classroom is named after somebody. One is a picture of the pole barn. And one is a picture of the outside of the building where the agricultural classroom, this outside of the agricultural classroom. I imagine it's a, that there are other classes in that building. Um, but they have their own specific door, obviously, because it's an agricultural building. So they have their own specific entrance, and they would have a place to put a name there. So what I suggested was that we put, make the Travis Seawright Agricultural Building and put that outside the classroom door. Because, like I said, that was the name that Parish supported in numbers for the naming of the school. And perhaps put, um, Ollie Norris Agricultural Barn on the barn, since we've heard that he has a history of the, of farming and, and agricultural. Uh, that way it would honor both people and honor them in their, I would say, their areas of expertise, their passions.
But I heard another nomenclature that was used instead of barn. It was.
He said pole barn.
No, it wasn't pole barn.
That was for the field, land lab, right?
What, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The land laboratory. Is that what it was?
It's a land laboratory with animals in it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair.
So if you wanted to name it the Ollie Norris Land Lab.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, just a sec.
This boy, I, this boy's just sent you the photos that, uh, Ms. Messenger was speaking of.
Okay.
So if you want to click on your computer, you'll be able to pull them up if you want, if, if that will help you with your decision.
Did I lose my turn?
That you can see what they're speaking of.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Did I lose my turn?
The, uh, Board Member Golden.
Thank you. I move that the, uh, uh, the, uh, building, the agricultural building in Lakewood Ranch High School be named the
Parish Community High School, North River, North River.
Yeah, North River, whatever it was.
I said it was North River.
We don't want to fight that again.
It's not that ridiculous.
Okay, I'm trying to get all this out before I forget it. I, I moved that the, uh, uh, that the agricultural building at Parish Community High School be named after Mr. Seawright, and that the, um, la- la- uh, land ba- land
Land Lab is what we
The land laboratory at Parish Community High School be named after Mr. Um,
Norris.
Norris, I second that.
Discussion.
And all of their names, I don't know just the last.
Vice, Vice Chair Messenger.
That was all, I was just seeking clarity that your intention is the agricultural building, the outside of the building to be named Travis Seawright Agricultural Building.
Yes.
And the intention would be on the barn to say Ollie Norris Land Lab, which is apparently, or Laboratory.
Yes.
However you want to say it.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that there is clarity on what that would be.
That's what I'm, that's my motion.
Got it. I like it.
Land and agricultural laboratory.
Are, are you all right with that? Please, hurry, would you be all right with land and agriculture?
I'm, I'm sorry, you're out of order.
I would hope that that would appease everybody.
Board Member Golden, okay. Now, um, I'm, I'm gonna ask for some legal guidance on this. I, I don't think there's any question, at least in my mind, that this naming has to be of some kind of brick and mortar. Now, the question, uh, and as far as naming the classroom building, you know, the Travis Seawright. And don't we have a middle initial for Travis?
So, it's a senior.
Not a middle initial.
Oh, okay, Travis Seawright, uh, Classroom Agricultural, you know, Building. Travis Seawright.
Senior, is what she's saying.
Senior. Okay, is, now, why don't we do it one apiece here? The, is there a motion, you know, to name the
There's already a motion on the table.
And it's been seconded.
It's been seconded.
Okay.
I think there's an understanding that it will include all of that.
Yes.
Okay, now, if we're, I, I want a clarification from our counsel. We started talking about land lab. Is, is that, are we referring just to the pole barn, folks? I don't know, it certainly isn't clear in my mind that it's a brick and mortar.
You know what, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair. I move that it become the Ollie Norris Land Laboratory Building.
Well, no, 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 he's, he wants the General Counsel to answer the chairman's question.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if, if the question is, what is encompassed by the motion as far as physical dimensions, you can clarify that. If the question is, is it okay, is it permissible under the rule to, to name a land lab, is that under, is that permissible by the rule, my, my answer is yes, it is. You know, that, I, I, I consider that a tangible facility of the school campus.
Okay, so it, it, in the le- the legal opinion is that this, what is generally described as a pole barn uh, could be named the Ollie
Norris.
Norris Land Lab.
Land and Agricultural Lab.
Agricultural Land Lab. Is that, is that the motion?
Take it.
Ollie Norris Agricultural Land Lab. Okay.
Laboratory.
I'm sorry. Okay, now. So, uh, we have, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm sure you will, that the motion is that this board, uh, approve naming the agricultural classroom at Parish Community High School, the Travis Seawright Senior Agricultural Building. And to also simultaneously name what is generally known as the pole barn as the Ollie Norris Agricultural Land Lab.
Laboratory.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I would not want agricultural to be in both names. Agri- you just said, well, because I never said that. Now, we're not gonna comp-
Okay, well, that's why I put it out, so you're not gonna
Just remove agriculture from the Len- Norris, uh,
Land Laboratory.
Yeah, that's it.
I think land laboratory indicates agriculture.
Yeah.
Yeah, land laboratory. Make the, make the full word laboratory, because that
Okay.
deals with
So let, let me, okay, I think that, uh, Deputy, you know, Superintendent Wagner has some comments.
Just one clarification, because I, I'm hearing a, a struggle with this a little bit, is that when I said land lab, I was envisioning it being all encompassing. It would encompass the barn, it could encompass the, the, uh, the shelter that we put the, the tractor under. It could encompass a shade house or a greenhouse. We don't have those now, but in the future, we may. It could encompass the land lab. So the land lab, to me, is all encompassing of the things in the outside area, as opposed to putting someone's name on the barn and making it be called, you know, this is their barn, it'd be all encompassing of the barn, of the land lab, which has all those different parts to it.
So all of the la- agricultural laboratory outside.
Yeah, without the word agricultural, like the
Okay, now,
We're in the same
If, if, if that's the interpretation, I'll go back to legal counsel. And legal counsel, as I understand him, has said, we're talking about naming something like, uh, brick and mortar things, not, not the nice scenery and the fields and all of that. So, uh, with that being said, you know, counselor, is it your, do you think it's legally permissible for us to, uh, include in the, the name, the, the naming of the fields and everything else around the pole barn, uh, the, the Ollie Norris Land Laboratory?
Mr. Chairman, um, one of the benefits of discussing the motion is to create certainty. So when it's time to vote on the motion, the members know what they're voting on. If you're asking me if, if those things are intended by the mover to be included in the motion, I think you need to ask the mover as to whether the way you're describing that is encompassed by the motion.
Okay, my question to you is, if that is the intention of the mover, is that permissible under our policies?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the Okay.
Are you gonna ask?
I'm sorry, Di, uh, deputies, and, okay. I'm sorry, sirs. Okay, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, or you're gonna have a box?
It's just a quick sidebar to get some clarity, which we could use greatly right now.
Thank you very much for trying to achieve that, Board Member Kennedy. Okay, now, I understand that the mover at this time is Board Member Golden. And, um, I believe that his motion, uh, is that we simultaneously approve naming of the agricultural classroom at Parish Community High School, the Travis Seawright Agricultural Building. It's number one. Is that, uh, am I hearing dissent here?
No, sir.
Senior.
Senior, you know, Travis Seawright Senior Agricultural Building. And to also provide the name of Ollie Norris Land Lab?
Laboratory.
Okay, Laboratory. Ollie Norris Land Laboratory that would be placed on what is now considered, uh, a pole barn, but will refer to the lands around that pole barn that is used as, you know, for steady, ag- for agricultural studies. Is that correct?
No, sir, that's not correct. Everything you said after the, after, uh, pole barn, I did not say, nor did I intend, and it didn't even come up until after the motion was made.
So is, is it your wish that it only referred to the pole barn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine, let me, I, I understood from Mr. Di, we needed to have that clarified. So let me repeat it again. That the, the motion is twofold. One, uh, to name the agricultural building at the Parish Community, uh, you know, High School, the Travis Se- Seawright Senior Agricultural Building. That's number one. Number two, that we name the, the pole barn on that campus the Ollie Norris Land Lab.
Laboratory.
Laboratory, okay. Is there a second to Board Member Golden's?
I seconded it.
It's now seconded by Mr. Golden. Discussion.
I, I don't need any more discussion, but Mr. Barber had a request to come up and speak. So I just wanted to ask, can he come up and speak?
Really?
I just wanted to clarify one thing, and it, because there's photos that I did, uh, send to y'all is, like, most of our agricultural facilities, uh, that classroom and the pole barn are sort of in the back portion of the, the high school. In that photo that I sent of the, the door, Gina, I know you're, you've seen the, the photo of the door, that's the pho- that's a door that comes out of the classroom, sort of leading to the, the pole barn, so. Um, and that, that classroom is part of a much larger, uh, you know, building, and so uh, the reason I mention that is this, is because, uh, uh, according to our, you know, the nomination forms that they submitted and everything, the people who bring the nominations forward are responsible for providing the signage for these, uh, uh, facilities. And so, um, they'll have to work with the schools, they'll have to raise the fund, uh, funds for the signage. But the signage, if you're talking about, you know, putting the sign for the building or whatever on top of that door, it's gonna be in the, the back portion of the, the facility, just as the pole barn is. It's just right across the, the driveway there. So I just want to clarify that, so you have it clear in your mind, so.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on Mr. Golden's motion that, that was seconded by Board Member Hope?
I'd like to ask Vice Chair Messenger. Did anything that Mr. Barber just said change your mind or attitude about what we want to do?
I don't think so. I think that that is the will of the community, and I think anybody that's in agriculture understands that you're not gonna have agriculture in the front of the school. Like, there's fields there on the side or the back of a school. We understand that that's the nature of agriculture, and, I mean, right now I have cows in my backyard, but, you know, not everybody driving by, you know, is gonna see that, and, you know, so I, I, I under- I think everybody understood that.
All right.
Okay, the chair, hearing no further discussion, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of Board Member, uh, Golden's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Board Member Golden's motion is approved unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Workshop items. Any suggestions, folks? Okay, Vice Chair Messenger.
I always like to throw them out there. Um, Mrs. Mendel brought up, um, an item regarding SAC. And when she emailed us earlier, I looked up our policies, and surely enough, we do have a policy that we adopted in June of twenty seventeen. That might have been when we did that large adoption to catch up on all our policies, because we were so behind. Um, but obviously, there was some oversight that we, we missed. Um, and so I would really like to have a dis- And so I would really like to have a discussion about that policy. I know that we'd have to publicly announce before we changed the policy, so I don't know how the process would really begin to alter that, but it's Policy 2125. And so I'd like to at least have a workshop where we can discuss necessary changes or postings so that we will, so we can change that policy if we feel that it's necessary.
Okay. Discussion regarding school advisory councils and their makeup.
Specifically, the Policy 2125.
Okay, 2125.
It is specific to the policy.
Okay. Any other, you know, suggestions at this time?
At...
Okay, yeah, Board Member Golden.
At that time, would that be appropriate to also discuss the student progression plan process? That, as I understand it now, is a 30-day process that involves whatever it is that we do in getting input, and it results in what we did earlier tonight. So I'm really, I just see those as kind of similar kind of concerns and considerations, the pupil progression plan. So I'd like to have, however it takes, you all know, I'm new here, so I'm trying to get this policy in place so that we don't go through what we've gone through next year. So how do I do that? Is that, do I ask for a workshop, or do it just...
Okay, we can have, we can include a workshop on that. Any other suggestions, requests? Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
I have a workshop request for information on how coaching stipends are allocated. So this is not a bargaining issue. This is not about coaching salaries. It's about how we choose how many coaches there will be in each sport, not their pay, but the allocations. We can go into it at the workshop, but there seems to be, the information that was brought to me, and I think the coach has a good point, is that there could be like a safety and supervision issue here because you have, there, we don't seem to have a uniform system to allocate coaching positions based on the number of students on the team and the length of the season and so forth. So I just maybe have Jason give us a presentation on that, and then we, as a board, can take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Any other suggestions at this time? Okay, one, you know, I got a couple thoughts along that line. And, you know, about the coaches and student athlete safety is a concern, I'm sure, of all of our, all Board members. And the, on Friday night at Brayden River, there was a student who had, it appeared to be a severe concussion. And toward the end of the first half. And it was at least a half an hour before an ambulance, you know, was available and on the field to receive the student and take it to the hospital. And I don't believe we have any kind of policy requiring that there be an ambulance, at least at, you know, varsity football games. But because of the nature of the game, it would seem, you know, appropriate. Now, I don't know if that is something discussion or that's administrative, can say, you know, this is what we're going to do. But I'm inclined to think that this is something we ought to do. And I don't know how that student is right now. But I can tell you that one of the people who was working the sidelines, you know, felt it was shameful on the district, we didn't have an ambulance there. And I wasn't arguing with them, okay? The, and it comes down to what we're going to require before the whistle blows and the game starts. That's how I look at it. Yes, Superintendent?
They do try to partner with the EMS department to have them there. However, if they're called away on a different medical situation, they do leave. I'm not certain if we can pay or require them to permanently be there for the entire game, but we certainly can check into that. I know, for the most part, they are at every one of our varsity games, but if they do have a call, they have to respond to the call. But I will certainly find out if we can work out an agreement where we can have them there permanently, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. I personally feel, I'm sorry, you know, we're going to stop the game. Now, we should have an ambulance there during the entire game. That's my personal feeling. And something that should be worked out, they have to get another team or something that's going to be exclusively there. But that's not the board's position, but that's how I felt about it. I, the other thing that's kind of right on the verge of it is something we, you know, talked a little bit about earlier, you know, today, was our positions for the legislative delegation, which is coming up on October 1, I think we said. And I think we should have, you know, some workshop to get a consensus of, you know, the priorities. And maybe we should have on an agenda, adoption of those priorities for our representations of priorities, you know, to the legislative delegation. And that's definitely time sensitive. And there was reference to FSBA meeting in Kissimmee, I believe, next week. And I will be there to, you know, see what our fellow board across the state feels is priority. And it's sometimes helpful if we were echoing across the state, you know, the same kind of priorities, and I'll be bringing that, you know, back to the board. But I think that some point by mid-September, we ought to have a workshop on our priorities to our, you know, delegation. Those are my thoughts. They're all good thoughts. Is there any other Board Member hopes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you kind of jogged my memory, because, and I don't even know how long ago it was, but I do recall requesting a presentation on the district's compliance with the state statutes, which relates to athletic trainers, concussion response, and all that. I don't think we ever got that presentation. We did?
We did.
Do we? Oh. Whoa, wow, now my memory's gone.
We can reset it.
Because it had the concussion response in it, so...
Yeah, it was the meeting, yeah, you said, it was the...
I remember because it was at the Civic Center.
That's right, yeah, it was the...
Where was it?
Naming of Parish High School night.
Oh, was it? Oh, it just clouded over. Okay, well, thank you, we already did that. I'll just go back to the notes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Any other suggestions at this time? Okay, the Chair, hearing none. We'll go on to updates and legal updates. Mr. Di.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Di, instructions, excuse me.
I have a question about the legal update.
Sure.
Mr. Di, do we not need to discuss the possibility of a shade meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kennedy, nobody's requesting a shade meeting with the board now. None of the legal team is requesting a shade meeting. That's a requirement of the statute, is the lawyer has to ask you to go into the shade. There's no, nobody's requesting that.
Okay, so, no shade, okay. No requests, no shade. Okay, so, no report from Legal Department, instructional update. Dr. Yost.
Thank you, sir. This evening, Dr. Shereen Gibson was appointed to the position of Executive Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning. Unfortunately, she is not here this evening. She's attending the ATD State Assessment Conference in Orlando. But she certainly is eager to assume her new roles and responsibilities as well as continue her responsibilities for assessment, accountability, and research. So we're looking forward to having her in the office. Also, I wanted to mention that seven of our Manatee County schools are proceeding through the process of becoming blue ribbon schools of excellence. And so the process has begun. They are surveying parents at this time, and there will be onsite visits beginning in the month of September. So those seven schools are Brayden River Middle School, Lee Middle, Hale Middle, Williams Elementary, Basha Elementary, Tara Elementary, and Palm Meadow Elementary. So we're looking forward to much success from those seven schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, operations update. Deputy Director Wagner.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had five short items. The first one is, tonight, a speaker made reference to Dr. Brown, Chief of Human Resources, and it was negative in the surface where they were talking about Ms. Mangello. You know, Ms. Mangello is our Director of Personnel, and she's doing an excellent job as Director of Personnel. We have chosen not to fill the Director or the Chief position of HR at this time. So, Mr. Kennedy, I appreciate you helping with that to make sure we remain positive with public comments. Number two, we sent out a press release about the clear bag procedures at all high school sporting events. You know, it's our goal to have the safest school system in the state of Florida, and part of that is not allowing large bags into our sporting events. So you can bring clear bags, transparents bags, and it's just one of our examples we're doing to maintain safety and security here in our school system. Number three, VoIP over Internet protocol. It's VoIP. It's underway in the school district. You know, this actually is a really big deal here for us. It's where we're deploying a new multi-year plan to update all of our locations for our phones. And what it does is it replaces a 15-year-old system that currently is over traditional circuits. When you pick up the telephone, you're making calls over traditional circuits. VoIP enables us to make telephone calls over the Internet. So it is cheaper in the long run. We think it'll save us about $300,000 annually. We've implemented, of course, at Parish Community High School, Mona Jane Middle School, Barbara Harvey Elementary School, also Williams Elementary School. And this year, we're implementing all the district sites in addition to Manatee High School. So watch for that, and we will keep you posted on the monies that we're saving. Thank you to Scott Henson and his team. Number four, Department of Construction Services. You know, besides the three new schools that opened, we also finished some of our summer projects for Johnson K-8, McNeil, Nolan. We added apparent queue lines, Onico Elementary School, the front office relocated, and security fencing, and Harley re-roofed. So Jane Drager and her team, we appreciate that. And those are just a few examples of the operations teams working hard to support our school system.
Okay, thank you very much. Superintendent's remarks.
Yes, well, most know that we completed our 10-day count. And this is for you, Reverend Golden. Our projection was 49,075 students. We came in at 49,077 students.
Way off.
Yeah, that's nothing to brag about.
Yeah, it means superintendent.
Pretty darn good.
Yeah, that's real good, man.
It's pretty darn good.
Yes, goodness.
Which means we are spending our money wisely, and we are making a few adjustments now by adding additional teachers to schools that may have had extra students enroll or transferring some whose numbers may have not come in as originally anticipated. As we know, that we set our tentative staffing plan in February and in March. So it is a projection. But over time, you can see trends, and our district does a really good job with that. We have 64 schools in our district, including Charter, and I'm happy to report that virtually all of these schools are off to a strong start. And they are focused on teaching and learning. We have a lot to be thankful for. We know that the issues related to Lincoln Memorial Academy are difficult and emotional. Fortunately, as the hearing is taking place this week, it is demonstrating that there are proper forums for these issues to be heard and addressed. It is my hope that the issues involving LMA can be handled in those forums and by the proper authorities. I hope we can all join together to keep all of our students focused on the business of learning, for that is our job, and that is where my focus will remain.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, Board comments. Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to both commend and thank the administration, all of our educators, our staff in the schools for a great start. We are well on our way to having a very successful academic year, so thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
I've got a couple of things. Number one is kind of a request, and it was Keenan Wooton's comment. Keenan is the Athletic Director at Lee, if you remember. And just a kind of a question of the Superintendent, which doesn't need to be answered right now, but if the board at some point here in the next meeting or sometime soon could get an update on when we are going to begin negotiations with MEA and AFSMI, or maybe you have an answer for me now, I don't know, but...
Already started. We're waiting until mid-September to have the next meeting, finalizing everything with our budget. But the process has already tentatively began.
Okay, so the next one is mid-September, though, you believe? Okay, thanks. Let's see what else. As always, I want to see if this name came to me yet. I wanted to, as I said at the last meeting, I wanted to thank all the principals and teachers who have made me feel welcome in my travels around the district these first couple of weeks. And I wanted to recognize a student that I met at the end of last week. But I didn't, I don't remember her name, and I didn't get it back. But we had a really interesting student situation on Thursday, and a young lady at Manatee High School really stepped up to take care of a brand-new student to the school. And it was, it was just an interesting situation, and one of her classmates really needed assistance from somebody, and this young lady stepped forward to say, hey, I will take care of this. And it was just really a nice moment, and I know sometimes that we, you know, sometimes we doubt our teenagers, but there's a lot of examples out there when teenagers really step up, and more so than we think. Also, in my fledgling capacity as a wellness representative, or a wellness ambassador for this building, I would look, I would like to put out the call for members of a co-ed softball team that will play on Sunday nights at GT Bray. If we can crowbar loose some wellness funds to pay for the team, that would be great. But otherwise, we'll just pay as individuals for the team. So if anybody out there, if you work in this building or even elsewhere in the district, because I don't know if I can get nine players out of this building, we'll see. But, so, if you are interested in playing co-ed softball on Sunday nights starting in mid-September, please let me know, because I got to get out and do something. And then finally, I was a little caught off guard, but I want to, as the Superintendent mentioned, this LMA thing is kind of, it is incredibly emotional, and it's certainly caused a lot of discussion and angst and, you know. And don't worry, Mr. Di, I'm not going to talk about the hearing. I want to focus on what comes after. And if you all remember the email, the one-way communication that I sent you a week ago Monday about a possible, whatever the result of the hearing is, there's a possibility out there that we could heal this community. No matter what is the result of that hearing, but we can make an attempt at healing this community. That group has reached out to me. I'm going to suggest that they reach out to you, Board members, individually. And, because I think we all want to see this not just come to an end, but we also have to deal with and plan for what comes next, which we've tried to do, but we, you know, we're kind of in limbo right now. So I just want to give you all a heads up, that I'm going to recommend that that team reaches out to you all individually, because we can't go in the shade to talk about it, and that's where we are. So that's it. Thank you all.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting in September, the District Five, Community Contact Meetings. Starting in September, the District Five community contact meetings will resume. These are the meetings that we try to have at the schools in District Five, leading up to other school board meetings. We try to schedule them at a time when the, when the agenda has been printed. The dates are September the 5th, September the 19th, October the 3rd, October the 17th. These meetings go from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They are open to anyone who wants to come and meet with the school board District Five They are held at the Lakewood Ranch YMCA, and we're going to try to keep that notice out there. I don't want to, I want to make it as easy as possible for people to come and talk with me. The second thing is that in the budget that we passed tonight, another interim budget, I don't think it was final, I would really like to be sure that the third-grade reading readiness funding for, for the Title I schools, at the very least, is increased in a significant way to help us overcome the level, the grade, third-grade reading deficit that presently exists. And I'd like to have some ongoing discussions about how to get that done and to make sure that that funding is included in the, in the last, in the final budget numbers. I want to thank Mr. Wagner and the opportunity to make my first board meeting at, at the Manatee Technical College Board of Governors. I've never been on a board of governors before, so I'm really, I feel pretty good about that. I'm probably as close to being a governor as I'll get on that board, so I'm glad, I'm glad of that. And I look forward to the innovative ways that we are trying to continue education and career preparation for our young children in this, in this district. I would like to close with a cautionary note with respect to the Lincoln Memorial Academy. Everybody that's making noise is not necessarily making a difference. And what I'm really more concerned about, as we go through this obvious, difficult time in the Palmetto-Lincoln community, is just that, that they are going through it. They've not been stopped by it, and it has not been magnified by anyone who is using the school for the purpose for which it is being used. I really have a problem when I open the newspaper and I'm reading about community leaders who I've never heard of before and who have only been known to make noise, not a difference. And I'm particularly disappointed when the clarion call of a few is magnified to be some sort of distress signal from the many. I have said before, I didn't just get to be black yesterday. I've been black all my life. So, I'm kind of suspect when everybody else is yelling fire, 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 when I'm here to tell you that these are embers. I remember just two meetings ago in this very chambers, when we had a police presence like we've never had before, and we had disruption like we've never had before, and here we are, two meetings later. And I, I am, I am more saddened and hurt than any other thing. So, let me end by saying I want to thank the superintendent for her level-headedness in helping us to get from one side of the situation to the other. I also want to thank the lawyers who have guided us and directed us, not only the lawyers that sit with us here at every meeting, but the lawyers that we have retained to represent our interests. And I too agree with Mr. Kennedy. Doesn't matter how it turns out, the bottom line is that what we did on the 23rd, or at least what I did on the 23rd, was designed to keep Lincoln Memorial Academy in the hands of the local school board. That's all. And anybody trying to make it more than that, anybody trying to do more than that with that is seriously not in touch with the reality of this board. I have not heard one school board member since we have been involved in this say, we want Lincoln Memorial Academy closed. Nor do I want to continue indefinitely trying to manage it or operate it. I've said in the beginning, it was, it is, and as far as I'm concerned, it will be a charter school. I, I just, I'm saddened by the fact that we keep trying to make much of a noise of a few, when I have not yet met one parent, not one parent, and I've only had one child that was quoted in the newspaper as approving some of the conduct at that school over the last week. If you don't have the water to put out the fire, at least don't pour gasoline on it to make it worse than it is. So, that's all I'm going to say about that. I just, I appreciate all that has been done to bring us this way. I'm not so sure whether the media is still here or not, or whether they're going to write their stories, but I don't want to, I'm just really tired of hearing about community leaders who are not leaders, and they certainly don't speak for the community. Just, just tired of that. People who are community leaders who haven't ever even been to Lincoln, don't even know where the students live, and don't, couldn't find it without a GPS. Just, just tired of that. People who come in here and just disrupt the people's business, and then we all react to that. That's not good. That's not good. So, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to make these comments. I'm looking forward to seeing whether or not all of these people who want to meet with me and who want to do something about Lincoln now will want to do that without being renumerated for it or without getting something out of it. I'm interested in seeing whether or not the famous wealthy athletes are going to now contribute to the school to make sure that it is continued on running properly. I'm, I'm interested in, in seeing whether the, the CEO of the charter school in this community that approached me is going to be willing to serve on the board of the Lincoln Memorial Academy's successor. And whether or not so many of the people in this community that are so vocal, I want to see how much they contribute to Lincoln Memorial Academy in the coming year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Golden. Vice Chair Messenger.
I don't have much to say. It's past nine o'clock. I like all of you, but I've spent seven hours with you. I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. I'll only be about 30 minutes. We've only been here seven and a quarter hours, and I want to thank everybody around the Rostrom here, and particularly board members, for making us a very, very, you know, productive evening and board meeting, you know, for our school district and for the, for the students and the staff that we try to help out and make this a better place. What, I'm just going to, you know, focus on, briefly on one event. On Saturday, I attended a luncheon honoring the 99th anniversary of the ratification of women's right to vote. It was quite a wonderful luncheon, and we had a great speaker, and the food was great. And I want you to know that I, I hate to see food wasted, and there were many donuts and cookies sitting around on the tables that were apparently going to be thrown out. And so, I helped the staff remove some of these and to put into a container to take to Sarasota Memorial Hospital, the room 919, where former board member John Cologne was hospitalized, and I think he still is. He had very, very, you know, serious, you know, back surgery. His wife and his mother, you know, were in the room, and I gave him this gift on behalf of the school board members and the superintendent. I wanted you to share the felony with me, and most of the donuts and brownies actually made it to the hospital, absent one cookie. And he was, you know, he seemed very appreciative of, of the thought. I am inclined to think that he's still there.
He is.
Room 919, Sarasota Memorial Hospital, and I think he would appreciate anyone's, everyone's, you know, messages, you know, to him. I, I made it quite clear to him, I was there on behalf of the superintendent and the board, and our prayers and best wishes are for him to have a speedy recovery, and best wishes to his family. With that, I'm going to conclude my comments and thank everybody here and adjourn the meeting.